Okay, we're all here. So, welcome everybody to the, let me turn this, the October 8th meeting of the San Carlos City Council. Would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the Bible of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item two is changes to the order of the agenda. Do we have any changes being asked for?
No changes from the staff this evening, Mr. Mayor.
All righty. And that brings us to item three, which is reports from that long closed session meeting we were in.
The closed session that we held in the special meeting immediately before the regular meeting, there are no reportable actions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Rubens. Item four is council communications and announcements. Who wants to start? Mr. Collins, how about you? You ready? No? Karen?
Well, I was pleased to hear that the CERT class is going to be offered on October 17th is full with 40 participants, half of whom are from the city of San Carlos, and also wanted to pass my thanks on to the Chamber of Commerce and all the fantastic volunteers that made the Art and Wine Fair such a wonderful success this past weekend.
Okay, thank you.
That's it.
We'll bounce over here to Mr. Olbert if he's ready.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to mention that I had the opportunity as liaison to the Parks and Rec Commission and out of curiosity to see how the Planning Commission was working to sit in on a couple of their meetings, and it was nice to see all of the effort being expended there on behalf of our community, and like to thank all the commission members for their continuing service there. And echoing a little bit of what Councilmember Clapper said, I was otherwise occupied this weekend, but I was glad to see that the community was able to consume the Art and Wine Fair without my help, so, but I understand a good time was had by all.
And Mr. Collins.
I just wanted to say that I had the pleasure of attending along with Councilmember Clapper the Hillside Trail opening, I guess that was a week ago Saturday, and got to see the brand-new bridges that were constructed. Doug Long was there along with members of the community and the people that actually constructed the bridges anyway. I'm very impressed, they've done a lot of great work on our trails in the city, and it's nice to have sort of an urban escape. I think we have a lot to be proud of.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Grisilli.
Last week I had the pleasure of visiting the Commonwealth of Kentucky for four days, and unlike Mr. Olbert and Mr. Collins who traveled abroad, I stayed within our environs. And Kentucky is known for horses and bourbon. I couldn't bring a horse, and I couldn't bring bourbon, so, like Mr. Olbert, I just brought chocolate bars with horses on them.
That's good. Thank you.
We don't, again, we don't have to put this on our Form 700, do we? No, okay.
I don't know, how much are these worth?
Not that much.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Very good, thank you very much.
Fifty.
Yeah. All right, and that comes to me then as the final, and I don't really have anything to report, except I did get up on Sunday morning after the Saturday you guys went to the trail opening, looked at my calendar and realized, I missed the trail opening. And I really wanted to go with my son, because we really enjoy those trails, so, glad you guys made it and that it was good, so. All right, that moves us on to item five A, which is presentations, and the presentation we have tonight, I believe there's just one, yes, there is, is a presentation of the 2012 Helen Putnam Award for Excellence to the City of San Carlos regarding a different approach to the budget and cost-cutting and so forth, so, who do we have from there to present the Putnam Award? Do I need to come down for anything, or you can do it?
At the end.
At the end, okay, you let me know.
Good evening, Mayor Grocott, members of the city councils, city staff, and residents of San Carlos. My name is Jessica Sample-Mullen, and I'm the Regional Public Affairs Manager for the Peninsula Division of the League of California Cities. It is a pleasure for me to be here tonight representing the League of California Cities to present the city with the League Helen Putnam Award of Excellence in the category of internal administration. I'd like to take a few moments to share a bit of history about the Helen Putnam Award. Helen Putnam was a mother, schoolteacher, principal, mayor, and county supervisor, but most of all, she was a person who viewed meeting one's potential as a measure of success. Excellence to Helen Putnam was someone who did his or her very best. She was as supportive and loving of people who did their best as she was the people who did the best. To the League of California Cities, Helen Putnam defined excellence. Established in 1982, the Helen Putnam Award recognized its outstanding projects and programs in California cities that deliver the highest quality and level of service in the most effective manner possible. The award is given annually in 11 categories: effective advocacy, intergovernmental relations and regional cooperation, housing programs and innovations, enhancing public trust, ethics and community involvement, health and wellness programs, planning and environmental quality, community services and economic development, internal administration, public safety, public works, infrastructure, transportation, the Ruth Freeland Award for Engaging Youth in City Government and League Partners, and the League Partners Award for Excellence in City Business Relations. Of the 99 applications submitted in 2012, 11 cities were honored with awards. The purpose of the League of California Cities Helen Putnam Award for Excellence program is to recognize and promote the exceptional efforts and innovative solutions by city governments to improve the quality of life in local communities, implement efficiencies in service delivery and operations, and provide services responsive to the community itself. The Internal Administration Award recognizes cities that develop creative and innovative solutions ranging from the promotion of positive workplace atmosphere and employee morale, efficiencies and fiscal aspects of operations, demonstrated effectiveness in communicating information on the condition of a city's finances and fiscal condition, innovative budgeting providing optimum use of resources, public records, access and clarity, innovative or development of technology for internal administration or public service, and improvements in communications and information management. It is obvious that San Carlos' different approach to budgeting, cutting costs, and adding services program exemplifies these goals in the objectives of the Helen Putnam Award. Over the past few years, cities throughout the state have faced budget challenges due to the economic downturn, which has required tough decisions and innovative solutions. After implementing significant cuts to the departmental budgets and using short-term revenues and reserves to try and close its budget gap, the city of San Carlos took a creative approach to resolving its 3.5 million structural general fund deficit while creating services to the community. The city held a series of public meetings and two all-day budget workshops where every department discussed their service level, budget, and challenges with the residents and the business community. The city manager laid out a choice of two paths for the city council and the community to consider. One path would balance the budget over a year and involve more severe service cuts, including the closure of a community center, several parks, and the elimination of the Parks and Recreation Department with the potential for future cuts, while the other path would examine police, fire, and parks and recreation services through a service and delivery analysis. The community voiced an interest in having the city budget balanced with its current revenues while examining how the city would maintain its level of service through various methods. Upon council authorization, city staff employed a service delivery analysis to examine various options to achieve the principles identified by the city council after the public workshops, which included reducing annual costs by 3.5 million or more, reaching benchmark costs, saving targets for each department as proposed by staff, providing the same or higher level of service to the community, reaching these goals within 12 to 18 months, and providing the city council with two or more service alternatives for choices in each area. By partnering with Samhail County's Department, the Sheriff's Department, in November 2010, the city was able to exceed its annual 2 million cost savings target for police services through shared management and resources, thereby allowing the city to reestablish services that had been unavailable in recent years, such as traffic enforcement, the police athletic lead for youth, a school resource officer, and creating a police substation at City Hall. In order to achieve the annual 1.3 million cost savings target for fire services, the city issued an RFP and evaluated 20 different service options before selecting the city of Redwood City to reestablish fire services. The new San Carlos Fire Department provides the same services of the prior Sheriff's Department as well as additional services in the areas of incident reporting, community events and involvement, and fire personnel training. And finally, the city awarded two contracts to private firms to provide parks and recreation services. In doing so, the city was able to reduce its annual expenses by more than $500,000 and increase services. Through its unwavering leadership and commitment to resolving the structural deficit, the city of San Carlos was able to save over $4 million a year in fire, police, and parks and recreation services while increasing its level of service to the community. This innovative approach serves as an excellent example of how a city can work with the community to address challenges and develop proactive solutions. On behalf of the League of California Cities, my congratulations to the city and the residents of San Carlos on receiving this prestigious award, and your most heartfelt thank you from all of us at the League to Mayor Grocott, members of the council, city manager Jeff Malby, and your outstanding city staff for the work you have done and will continue to do to enhance the quality of life for all your residents. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Randy Ruiz is my name. I was on this council a couple of years ago, for four years, and mayor during the 19, I'm sorry, 2010 here. So, I have a lot of experience. This whole timing of what this award means is perfect. We had a great need to save money. We had a 3.5 million dollar deficit per year, and we needed to make change quickly, and we did make change. It's pretty difficult to go up to your police department and say, we don't need you anymore, and that's kind of what we did, although we moved them to a sheriff's department. We ended up for our park and rec, what we call the mow and blow, we were paying $700, $750,000, and now we're on contract doing it for $281,000. So, our whole theme was better service at a lower cost, and that kind of came through. We have another three or four examples of things that we did within a year, and we went to, from a 3.5 million dollar deficit to a $4 million plus in about a year and a half's time. And so, those savings have been with us now the last three or four years, and it's worked out beautifully. So, with that, I want to say thank you very much for the people of San Carlos.
We have to leave that here.
I'll leave this here.
You can take a good look, and then, okay. I'm sure Randy would like a duplicate copy for his study at home, but didn't see one available. Okay, moving on to item six, which is public comment. I don't have any speaker cards, but is there anybody from the public that would like to say something to the council and the public at large, something that's not on the agenda tonight? Okay, I don't see anybody coming forward, so we'll just move on to item seven, which is approval of the consent calendar. The consent calendar is approved as a basket of items, if you will, unless someone from the public, the staff, or council would like to pull an item out for separate discussion. And myself, I'd like to pull out the last item, which is item J. Anyone else? Okay, so I would entertain a motion for items A through I.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve items 7A through 7I.
Very good.
Second.
Okay, local?
Councilmember Clapper?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Grocott?
Yes. And there's nothing in there, Mr. City Attorney, that we need to read out? I see a resolution, but I guess that's okay, right? Yeah, we're fine. And item J, we'll just pick that up at the end of the meeting. So, that brings us to reports to council. I don't see anything listed here, so I'm assuming staff has nothing to report under this item. And that takes us on to item 9A, which is unfinished business, consideration of adopting an ordinance amending the San Carlos Municipal Code to adopt the California Green Building Standards, otherwise known as CalGreen, Part 11, with mandatory energy efficiency provisions and amendments and modifications to Section 15.04.125 of the San Carlos Green Building Ordinance. Go ahead.
Right. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of council. This evening, the council has before them the second reading of the amended San Carlos Green Building Ordinance, formally incorporating Greenpoint and LEED standards. This amended version of the ordinance is based upon prior direction by council and input from various stakeholders. Staff has made necessary changes to the wording of the ordinance since the September 10th council meeting to address concern as it pertained to verification of green elements and so forth. And if you'll recall, there was concern over the independent verification versus allowing the design professional of record provide the necessary documentation where applicable. Then also, with that, I'd like to address a few 11th-hour concerns that have come up over the last few days. First, the San Carlos Green Building Ordinance could still be viewed as small-business friendly in that we are not requiring anything beyond the, or we're not proposing anything beyond the minimum state-mandated requirements for typical smaller tenant improvements and smaller non-residential commercial projects. Even the state-mandated requirements won't touch or have a less likelihood of touching the smaller tenant improvements that we typically see at the service counter. Second, the San Carlos Green Building Ordinance does not require certification of any project covered under the ordinance. Residential Greenpoint standards are verified by Greenpoint Raider and commercial LEED requirements verified by the LEED design professional of record, as is typically associated with larger commercial development. Commercial projects over 10,000 square feet will require commissioning as already required by the state-mandated CalGreen. Third, I wanted to address one item, can't access my PowerPoint right now, but there's a phrase in our compliance matrix, or there's a line item that says, "LEED certified for commercial projects 10,000 square feet or less." That doesn't mean that we're asking for certification, it's simply a threshold level or LEED category, so to speak, similar to LEED Silver. And then lastly, some housekeeping or typographic items I'd like to bring to your attention. Section 15.04.125C, amendments and modifications, was not edited to reflect removal of the voluntary standards previously under 15.04.125G, thus changing the lettering of the remaining sections. Also, there was reference to required certification under a definition item called LEED/USGBC verification. That has been removed to remove that confusion. None of the prior-mentioned 11th-hour housekeeping items would have resulted in a change to how the ordinance would have been enforced, but they are brought to your attention regardless.
So, Mr. Valley, if I may jump in here, we did get a letter from an architect?
Yeah.
Pointing out, it seems those same items, is that what you're addressing?
Exactly, yes.
Okay, very good. Go ahead.
And if you have any questions, I'll be happy to address them.
Okay, questions? I actually, I just want to let the council know, I have a number of questions that I went in and I actually met with one of the workers, one of the fellows that works for Chris in the building department, I'm not sure of Matt's last name.
Farrell.
Matt Farrell, that's right. And tried to get some of the questions answered by Matt, but unfortunately, Chris and I had intended to get together and have a meeting, because I wanted to go over the real detail and the specificity of what's being asked for here, and intended to meet with Chris, but unfortunately, he had a reason to not be here last week, and so I didn't have that chance to meet with him. The meeting I had with Mr. Farrell was enlightening, but it did not, he was not able to answer all the questions I had. So, I would ask the council, do you want to go through those questions, or potentially we could postpone this item and I could have my meeting with Mr. Valley and wouldn't have to answer, get the questions answered here, or what would be the pleasure of the council?
Through the chair, we've already moved this past the 17th time, I think, we've seen this, because unfortunately, some of us weren't here, and so we waited to the last minute. I mean, I'm a little bit surprised that you haven't asked all these questions in the previous time, but I would just like to listen to them, because I think we need to move on with this. This is the third time or fourth time we've seen this.
Okay. Well, for starters, one of the questions I asked about was the impact that this would have. Sure. Before I go, does anybody else have any questions?
No.
Okay. So, the first question I had for Mr. Farrell was regarding downtown properties, and, you know, we have a lot of commercial, for instance, on Laurel Street, the 25-foot wide or whatever they are, tenancy buildings, and if someone were to come along and take over one of those buildings and make improvements and so forth, the concern I had was getting into additional expense relative to these requirements. So, could you speak to that?
Well, what you'd be talking about then is your typical small business that would be coming in along Laurel Street, and I alluded to that in my initial talk this evening, is that our ordinance, at least the proposed ordinance, is small-business friendly in that respect, in that we're not requiring any more of those types of businesses or tenant improvements, or whatever you want to call them, beyond what CalGreen requires, and the likelihood of those tenant improvements falling even under CalGreen is...
You refer to CalGreen because we have that now?
We have that now, yes, but, right. And right now, CalGreen only touches on, you have to have a valuation of $500,000 or a square foot threshold of, I think it's 5,000 square feet, so we're not touching any tenant improvements with that, even with our, I'm sorry, 2,000 square feet. Even when January 1st rolls around, when that threshold lowers to, I believe it's, I want to say 200,000, I should know this by now, because we've gone over this a thousand times, or 1,000 square feet, those small businesses are still going to be, for the most part, under the radar, unless we, you know, get possibly another Pete's or more of a chain-type tenant improvement, then that would be, fall under the CalGreen requirements. But again, CalGreen only for the tenant improvements. I'm not sure if I answered your question.
Yeah, you did, and then when we get to the other side of San Carlos, we've basically addressed small businesses on Laurel Street, then we get to the other side of San Carlos, we have a lot of warehouse-type structures, the Ariaga Buildings, the Tanklich Buildings, and so forth, and the type of remodels that we've seen in those spaces, how would what we're looking at here impact most of those projects?
Well, I mean, one would think, once we get over in that area, we'd be looking at more of a larger chain-type tenant improvements possibly, that would fall under the, would basically fall under CalGreen then, and be impacted by CalGreen only, unless we're talking, again, new commercial or over 10,000, or new commercial 10,000 or less.
So, even... What you're saying is a project like the marketplace, for instance, that would automatically launch you into this higher standard, but if you had a TI in, again, a warehouse-type structure where you're maybe changing out the office, maybe putting in more offices, I know, you know, you do so much and you get hit with handicap improvements, you know, where there...
Possibility upgrades are always a factor.
Right, and I know those factors come in and are a cost to either the tenant, usually the tenant, or the property owner, and so the reason I'm asking the question is I have a concern for that type of business trying to do an improvement in that type of piece of real estate and then getting hit with higher standards, more costs, and again, as I had told the council before, I'm not so much concerned about the construction costs, those are usually covered by your construction loan, but if there's upfront costs like that in the design and the verification and going through the nuts and bolts of it before you even get to construction, that's where I have a concern.
Sure, I understand that, and again, you know, projects over in the area that you're talking about, if they're anything other than, you know, new commercial over 10,000 or new commercial less than 10,000, we're talking about tenant improvements here, we're still under CalGreen.
Okay.
So, it's, you know, even to that degree, we're almost, not only small-business friendly, so to speak, but maybe mid-business friendly as well, you know, with the ordinance. We're not really asking for anything more, we're asking for more by what, you know, the compliance matrix states is, you know, the new commercial, really, new, starting from scratch.
Okay. And then, so that takes me off of the commercial side of it. When we get into the residential, can you go into some of the detail of what's being required, the specifications and so forth, what type of things a homeowner is going to be asked to put into a home that they're not now putting into a home?
Well, what I had alluded to are, when I brought this to council back in, I think it was March, granted, it was a different council at that time, but I had a PowerPoint slide up that indicated a lot of the projects that we're reviewing, you know, the new homes, the residential reconstruction, were in the 75-point range, and so your question is, well, what does that entail? It can, we've, that's including the 15% above Title 24 as well, so, that's, the 75 points is representative of, to some degree, what we're already looking at. It's just kind of a formal recognition of this and a formal requirement of it now, based upon input that council, you know, received and the direction that we were given. So, what are those items? It can be anywhere from, you know, more efficient windows, more efficient HVAC, cool roof, more insulation, there's other factors that you can get green, you can get green points for, some of them have some value, some don't, but we're kind of in that ballpark already with what I had presented to council in March, with what we're already reviewing.
When I met with Mr. Farrell, he also talked about some of the water use aspects, getting to faucets, landscaping, et cetera.
Yeah, and that already, actually, we already tap into the bath remodels and kitchen remodels with that aspect of the code, so there are, there's already some energy efficient or water use improvements just under the plumbing code that we enforce naturally, and yes, those items are also dovetail into the new homes and residential reconstruction as well, and are covered under green points.
So, part of this is really, since so much of it's already required under CalGreen and under, some of it under the code itself... and under, some of it under the code itself, if I hear you correctly, then what you're saying is what we're doing really is requiring a third-party consultant to go through the point rating system and provide the paperwork that that's being done and also the verification that it's being done as the building is constructed. Is that correct?
We are adding a layer to our ordinance that has been deemed valuable by council, so to speak. I may not be speaking for everyone here, but at some point in time, we were given direction to dovetail green points with, you know, the ordinance and so that's what we did.
And so that layer is doing what exactly?
That layer is, it's viewed as being greener, it's viewed as having a greater impact on greenhouse gas emissions, it's viewed as our greater ability to measure the impact that our projects are having on greenhouse gases and so forth.
So again, I'm sorry to keep asking you this, but, so that layer brings in an additional consultant to a project and those additional costs, but so much of what's being done here is being done already either under green building, which we're under already.
Through the chair, can I ask a clarifying question?
I'd like to hear his answer first.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Okay.
Oh, I did it, maybe it was interrupted. But, so my point is, so much of what is being asked for and to be verified, if you will, by hiring a consultant, so much of it is already being done because it's just under the green building code that we're under already.
I'm going to kind of answer that cautiously, saying that yes, many items of what are in green points are what we address already. If we don't address it already, we're going to address it, definitely within a certain timeline.
Next 18 months or so.
We're, yeah, we're dealing with more restrictive codes coming down the chute as of January 1st, 2014, and then more restrictive codes coming after that until, again, we get to zero net energy use by 2020. We should have stated numerous times that requires one to generate the energy that one uses. So we're getting there, there's, the notion though, that we're, notion though, that we're not there yet and are not doing, in, are not doing enough.
All right. Sorry, Mr. [inaudible]. Go ahead, but that's fine.
Thank you. What I wanted to get clarification on, which I think I may have heard in the last few seconds, but let me just ask the question again. My recollection from the discussions back in the spring were that adopting a Greenpoint LEED-based system, to call it, for lack of a better term, was in fact doing something more than what we had before. It might not, and in fact, ultimately, as you've said on several occasions, ultimately, the CalGreen standards are anticipated to go far beyond where we currently are today and in fact swap the current LEED green point, yeah, benefits, presumed benefits, again, for lack of a better term. So, but my recollection is that adopting this actually was moving the dial relative to where we were. And I just want to confirm that that's in fact the case because it's, because it's, I'll let you answer the question first.
It's, it's, yes, it, I'm somewhat getting tongue-tied here, but it's viewed as moving the dial, yes, as we're being greener now and so forth. And that's, if that's what the council's, you know, intention of this council, I mean, of this ordinance is, then that's where we're at right now.
Okay. Because I, I'm not trying to read anybody's mind or project, I mean, one could make the argument that if we were adopting something that had absolutely no impact relative to where we were previously, other than the fact that it was going to, in a number of occasions, number of situations, cause somebody to spend more money on their project, that would, might very well give people pause. But that's why I was asking you, it is moving the dial. The nature of these discussions seems to be that, you know, it's not like a single dial, I mean, there's a lot of dimensions to this whole issue of being more efficient in terms of resource utilization and whatnot. But thank you for your answer.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. All right, we have a public comment on this item, so first we'll take Kathleen Gallagher, followed by Suzanne Emerson.
Good evening, Kathleen Gallagher, 1777 Elizabeth Street. Thanks to the council members for your vote to approve the updates to the green building ordinance. With this update, San Carlos joins 43 neighboring cities that have similar requirements to these green building ordinances. Through my work in sustainability, I am familiar with the other green building requirements of most of our neighboring jurisdictions, and I have found that our San Carlos green building ordinance update has moderate requirements. We're basically in the middle of the pack. We're not too lenient, we're not too restrictive, and I believe this is an excellent approach for the city of San Carlos. I feel like there is some missing discussion as far as the return on investment for green building. Certainly, there are some costs, but I did want to state that there are extreme cost-effective measures, six, up to 65, these are documented, up to 65% reduction in energy efficiency and reduced energy bills, reduced water and natural resource conservation, improved indoor air quality, especially important for people that have asthma, young folks, our seniors. In July 2012, a report was completed by UCLA, it just was released, of 1.6 million homes that found that green homes sell for about 9% more than non-green homes. Another report came out on October 4th talking about the return on investment in LEED. So it just, my point is that there's some discussion about upfront costs, but the fact is that there's a significant return on investment. The most recent report is showing that green building results in life cycle savings of more than 10x the initial investment. These are documented in these reports. So I thank you for your vote tonight and look forward to the green building ordinance for San Carlos.
Next is Suzanne Emerson, followed by David Krepp.
Good evening, Suzanne Emerson of San Carlos. I'm a local green building consultant, Greenpoint raider, and environmental advocate. I'd like to thank the building department for bringing forward this ordinance amendment. This ordinance would be somewhat less stringent than some of our neighboring jurisdictions such as unincorporated San Mateo County and San Mateo Palo Alto in that does not prohibit the raider from being financially vested in the project and doesn't require full certification through Build It Green or the U.S. Green Building Council. But it's much more consistent with those municipalities that have green building ordinances than what we have now and moves us along towards implementing the climate action plan that the city of San Carlos already has on the books. In answer briefly to the question that was raised about what the difference would be with this ordinance than what we have right now, one aspect of it is the moving of the dial, especially with regards to water conservation, in addition to the ultra-low flow fixtures like the toilets and the showerheads and whatnot, it requires certain additional water points. We usually find people are able to get those through getting the low water use dishwashers and washing machines and things like that, or sometimes they go with their outside landscaping water points instead. So it sort of moves the dial, especially in the water area, also sometimes in the resource conservation area. And then it also incorporates verification of some aspects of the code that have not in the past necessarily been enforced by many jurisdictions. This is the not oversizing of HVAC equipment, making sure that your furnace is not twice the size it needs to be so that it's more efficient. And many of the ventilation issues, those tend not to be high on the list of priorities for building departments. Don't know whether or not it is for our building department, just saying, generally speaking along the peninsula, those sections of the code have sometimes not been as thoroughly enforced and the green building program would do that. Thank you very much for considering these issues.
Thank you. David Krepp, followed by Kim Steinman, or I may have mispronounced that, but is Kim here? Okay, you know you are, thank you.
Hi, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council, I'm David Krepp. I'm a local architect and I was a member of the ad hoc stakeholders committee that met twice with Chris Valley to advise on the updating of this code. I live in 289 Crestview in San Carlos. Pretty much what you have on the board, I believe, is what the stakeholders committee came up with in terms of the basic requirements. I thought, in fact, that the revised green building ordinance had been approved unconditionally at the August 27th council meeting, but I now understand that it was revisited and weakened at a later city council meeting to allow developers to self-certify if they are certified raiders. I'm sorry, but this is a direct conflict of interest and should not be allowed. And I want to give you an example. Let's say a developer approaches the city with a proposal to develop a parcel of land in San Carlos and he says to the planning and building departments, then he's a building inspector for the city of Belmont, so there's really no need for the city of San Carlos to review the plans or to do any building inspections because it's a professional building inspector, he can be trusted to meet all the city requirements without independent city or outside review. Would the city allow him to proceed on that basis? Of course not. The independent review is built into the permit review process. It's the same for the green building ordinance. The green building ordinance is part of the city's building permit review process and it should, and as such, should be required at the exact same level of diligence as the zoning and life and safety aspects of permit approval. This means either city or independent third-party review. I urge the council to reconsider their decision to accept the self-certification and return the language of the orientation back to what it was that had been originally approved in August 27th and in any case, approve the ordinance somehow tonight, but preferably as it was back the first time it went around. Thank you.
Next we have Kim Steinjan. Oh, I see, I'm sorry, I can see it now.
Yeah, I did have my hand up.
Followed by Ray Viati.
Hi, I'm Kim Steinjan. I've been a resident of San Carlos for 18 years. I've been licensed, a licensed architect for 30, LEED certified for building design and construction, so my LEED certifications are current and I really think this item needs more study. For the practitioner, these overlapping codes and overlapping jurisdictions are a nightmare and I think the council members are already on the track and understanding that the CalGreen mandatory code is already well on its way to overtaking these third-party codes. These are third-party organizations, U.S. Green Building Council has nothing to do with the United States government, LEED is a brand and nothing more. Let's leave it mandatory, it has no place in the cities, in the cities' codes. San Carlos really shouldn't be blindly following some third-party organization and agreeing to whatever they decide to do in the future. Okay, that's that. On the CalGreen side, I strongly object to Tier 1 and Tier 2. It's over and above the mandatory CalGreen codes. The CalGreen code is the first statewide mandatory green building code in the country. It's already on track for net zero energy by 2020 for residential and 2030 for non-residential and the state is already doing it. I mean, if you didn't have a state code, you would go someplace like LEED. And then, just to address the Tier 1 and 2, it just requires that for both residential and non-residential use, that the energy standards be 15% more stringent, so you use 15% less energy. Well, the 2013 building code, which is coming up next year, I think it takes effect on January 1st, 2014, reduces energy consumption for residential by, I believe, 25% and for commercial by 30%. So that already surpasses the 15% that we're talking about with Tier 1 and Tier 2. Stop the overlapping codes, this is a nightmare to enforce. I feel sorry for your building officials, I really don't want my tax dollars going to people spending their time in this way. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ray Viati, followed by Kevin Holden.
Hi, I'm Ray Viati, I'm a local architect here in San Carlos, I actually live on 15 Roslyn Avenue. I'm here, kind of reiterate what the previous speaker said, it's a murder to deal with one code after another and everybody has their own little way of interpreting and how they want to, how do they want to enforce it. The biggest thing is that we all know is we're getting a new code in 2014. It's going to be revised. So why are we going to revise the zoning code that you guys have already adopted just because we can? I mean, does that really make sense in the name of being greener? Making a more restrictive code should have a lot more thought behind it besides just trying to, you know, adjust the dial to capture more, should have a driven reason, like what you're, what the zoning code has for your soils, you had an issue, you changed the code, you've got Zone A and Zone B that have specific needs. This is, this is kind of like throwing a dart at a dartboard, trying to capture more, stop trying to be greener just for the sake of being greener. It, you know, the code is evolving, it's getting stricter, we're all learning about it. If you look at the green code right now, it's very small, there's a lot of short chapters that are going to only get longer in the 2014 code because they're learning how to implement it, they're learning about what works and what doesn't work. So it's, you know, you need to think about it. We want to do this because it makes sense, not just because we can. Thank you.
Thank you. And last speaker on this item I have is Kevin Holden.
Good evening, Mayor Grockott, council members and staff, my name's Kevin Holden, 1140 Cedar Street here in San Carlos, 28-year resident and a 22-year owner of a business here in San Carlos. I'm here tonight to comment with my small perspective on the San Carlos green building ordinance and I apologize for getting in on this item late. I am a licensed heating and air conditioning contractor. I deal with Title 24 and green building in some fashion every day that we work. I totally support energy efficiency in building practices when they are supported by a building owner. I spend much time with my prospective clients counseling them on their options. The fact of the matter is, we're here in Climate Zone 3, higher efficiency than what the state standard does not always financially pencil out. In my industry, due to current reasonable, or reasonable gas and electric rates and extremely low swings in temperature between our seasons, the cost of high efficiency doesn't, or starts to save somewhere past the equipment's half-time of life. And then as the efficiency grows higher, that time for savings gets longer before you start saving money. I fully supported the energy stimulus package in 2010. This gave homeowners a financial chance to support green building and construction recycling. Contrary to a comment at a previous meeting, I really feel that here in San Carlos, the market of the average homeowner does not support many of the additional green building costs that are involved with this ordinance. But that in no way reflects the feelings towards green building or the citizens of San Carlos. Don't misunderstand me, my goal tonight is not to change your mind regarding green building. My goal is to ask you to take more time to review this ordinance, especially what it costs, who it costs, and what the need at this point in our faltering economy to mandate citizens and property owners of the city of San Carlos with an ordinance that exceeds the state of California's already stringent regulations and plans for the future. We lose money every day because people can't afford certain things that are required in the building code. This just adds to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that is all the comment cards I have. Any discussion on the item?
Do we need a motion in a second for discussion?
Sure. Anybody want to give a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'll move that the council adopt ordinance number 1448, amending ordinance 1422, the 2010 California Green Building Standards Code, parentheses, CalGreen, close parentheses, Part 11, with mandatory energy efficiency provisions and amendments and modifications to Section 15 dot oh four dot 125, the quote, "San Carlos Green Building Ordinance," unquote.
I'll second that. So question from my colleagues, where do we go when the state comes up with the 2013 code, as this architect had mentioned?
2014?
Well... Well, no, it's 2013 building code. It's going to be the next addition of the building code. And that code is going to require, as the architect said, a 25% higher standard in Title 24 energy use than we have currently under the current code. And then, we're talking about an ordinance that's going to pop 15% on top of that. So, we're talking about coming up with a, what's that, a 40% increase in energy efficiency.
Actually, would it, would it, would a change to Cal Green affect everything other than the commercial, small additions?
Through the chair and I'll let Chris jump in as well on this. A couple of points. One is that the energy efficiency enhancements that the speakers talked about is scheduled to come into effect on January 1, 2014. And presumably, what's going to happen next year is we'll come back to you with some more thoughts about the green building code and it may be at that time that the 15% Tier One enhancement that one of the speakers referred to might, we might recommend that that go away. And there's also, as Chris can tell you, some additional Cal Green requirements coming in 2013, 14, 15, et cetera. I think as one of the council members indicated earlier, the state has made it very clear to us, they are going to be ramping up Cal Green real fast now. And so, that's one of the, I think, points of discussion here and debate as we talk about how many local enhancements we need both now and in the future as we see the states start to ramp up their requirements that are mandatory.
Mr. Valley?
I'd just like to echo what Mr. Morris said is that I, this will require revisiting this again, maybe not right at 2014, January 1st, but halfway through 2014 or up toward 2015. I think we're going to need to bring this back to council and say, look, this is where we are now. This is how this ordinance is impacting projects, et cetera, et cetera. And if Build It Greens is doing their job, they will, you know, put themselves out of existence because they're the stick that keeps, you know, pushing the, us to go further and further and further. And I think at some point in time, though, they, you know, the state's going to get beyond this. So then, what do we do? And that's a question we'll have to bring forth to all of you about maybe 18 months or so.
Okay.
One other item I'd like to add?
Sure, go ahead.
If, in fact, the, this version of the ordinance is passed tonight, I have to still run it by the Energy Commission and that can be a 30 to 60-day review time on their end. I just want to make that clear.
California State Energy Commission?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. It is, you cannot enforce it until they give it their blessing.
Okay, very good. Sure.
So, does this end up being a conditional approval?
We, we cannot enforce this ordinance until it gets the Energy Commission approval.
Okay, so the ordinance gets approved, but it's not enforceable until this final step?
Correct. They've already got a version of our ordinance. I've already had this ordinance pre-reviewed, this version of the ordinance that you're considering this evening, pre-reviewed by the Energy Commission, yet they're still looking at a 30 to 60-day review time on their end. They may have streamlined things, I'm not sure.
And just, just to reiterate, what would be the consequence of not passing this ordinance, not doing anything?
The consequence of not passing this ordinance means we, I would assume, we stick with our current ordinance.
But what's the downstream effect eventually on homeowners and business owners wishing to make, you know, additions and remodels and reconstructions?
If we pass the ordinance tonight?
If we don't.
If we don't, then we, well, then we stick with the ordinance as it is. I'm not quite sure how to answer that question, you know, dollar-wise or whatnot.
Well, I guess where I'm going with it is that, do we then set up people who are refurbishing, remodeling, adding on to their property for some, the imposition of some future requirement or standard that they may not be able to meet?
If a project were built now under our ordinance, would it, would that project meet future code requirements?
Well, I guess, I guess that, I guess what I'm saying is the state couldn't come back and say, well, you built this thing in 2012, but...
We, well, so you're saying retro, so if something's built today?
Retroactive enforcement, no. But the net effect would be that a lot of people would not have brought their, their homes or their businesses up to scale.
The new code development, I'm sorry, the new code development is not retroactive. We don't go back to prior projects and say, oh, by the way, you need a cool roof or, by the way, you need to add a front porch.
To discuss that item a little bit with you? You're saying what would, you know, the net effect or with, let's say we do between now and 2014, if you look at how many residential, for instance, how many residential remodels, how many commercial remodels we would do. Commercially, I don't, that's why I asked the questions I did. I don't see it affecting us unless we were to get, as Mr. Valley said, another large commercial project on the order of a PAMF or a major remodel of a downtown space like Pete's, which those are few and far between. So commercially, this isn't going to make a big, a great deal of difference. Now, it will add to some cost of doing a project because you have to hire a consultant to do it. Residentially, we do how many projects a year? Major remodels or new homes? New homes, almost zero, but major remodels?
Well, the last information I provided you were in the ballpark, with the first year of enforcing the ordinance, we were in the ballpark of about 30 residential projects. And I think I had two or one commercial project that fell under the ordinance. And I, our permit count is kind of on par with last year, so I'm anticipating those similar numbers for 2012.
So between now and 2014, you might be looking at 60 residential projects. And the point is, the point, the reason I was asking Mr. Valley earlier about really, you know, what's that extra layer? That extra layer, as I see it, is a dollar square foot for your project. Because the things that the ordinance is imposing on a homeowner, other than, as Ms. Emerson said about the water usage, and there are a lot of ways around that, and there, you know, actually, some of the water usage things are hit on already by, you know, toilets and showerheads and so forth. But as she mentioned, with appliances, it can be a little different. Although appliances, although appliances are going that way anyways. The market's just simply responding to this stuff. So the net effect is those 60 homeowners who do major remodels are going to spend an extra $2,000, $3,000 perhaps on consultant fees, maybe a little bit of extra money, as Mr. Valley put in his report on some of the construction costs. But other than that, no difference than what we're, see, we're under, we've done this before. I was on council, Bob was on council when we did this before and went forward with some of the green building standards. That's why I'm opposed to it because I don't see any really value in what we're doing, given the fact that we're going to have to do it again in 2000, at least by 2014. And we're really not gaining much traction and yet we're giving to the homeowner added cost that, for the energy savings and so forth? As Mr. Holden said, the appliance, if you look at an appliance, for instance, or the, like a furnace, it's going to be halfway through its life and you're not even close to paying the thing off. Your, your energy bills, the savings on your PG&E, it'll take you 30 years. So that's, I, I don't, that's why I don't see us really needing to do this. I think we're going through a lot of machinations simply because of a targeted political will in this community and we're responding to, to politics, basically.
So, a, under Cal Green, what we have right now, someone doesn't have to pay attention to the type of furnace that they get?
No, they do. You turn in a project, you have to turn in a Title 24 Energy Calc. It recommends the furnace size, the efficiency has to be there on the furnace.
So how would that be different than the type of furnace one would be likely to select using the Greenpoint approach from your understanding?
These are some of the details I wanted to talk to Mr. Valley about, but I don't really see it as being any different.
Although, that's where, through the chair, that's, that's where, you know, it is a multi-dimensional kind of thing. We tend to focus a lot on energy efficiency in this discussion and it's not just energy efficiency. It's energy efficiency in water use and air quality and recycling and a whole bunch of other dimensions. That was essentially the question I asked Mr. Valley before about, did it move the needle? If you reduce it all to one needle? And, you know, the comment was, yes, it does. Now, does it move it enough to justify the cost that we're imposing? That's a judgment call.
One of the things that I heard from a city council meeting was last spring, before I was on the council, where this was being discussed in a preliminary format, was that there was some interest in taking a look at the Greenpoint approach because it would give slightly more flexibility in the case of residential projects versus just taking the Cal Green approach. Did I hear that correctly? Was that part of the benefit of?
That's, that is, through the chair, that is my recollection.
Okay.
That at least, at least two council members, I think it was, maybe more, both Mr. Klein and myself, talked about that as an attraction.
So tell us what the flexibility is, if you think there's flexibility there?
The flexibility, Mr. Mayor, was under the point-based, a point-based kind of system as opposed to a thou shalt have or thou shalt not have. We were trying to give project sponsors some flexibility. And if I had to synopsize the last six or seven months of discussions that we've had, both in these chambers and I've had with staff, what it seems to boil down to is the building code process works with thou shalt have or thou does not need. It's not really designed to work with a points-based flexibility system. If one wants to try and have that and one wants to not create your own, then you are driven to something like Greenpoint or LEED or something like that because that's the way those systems are built.
So, here's what's happening. There's an umbrella over all of this that says thou shalt have. Whether we're under the system we are now or this system, the only difference is, under that umbrella of thou shalt have right now, now you're adding thou shalt have and here are your choices on getting there, is you can do this, 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 and you have to show us that you're doing it and hire a consultant to show us that you're doing it and fill out this paperwork and here's your points. All the things that come under that Chinese menu that you're talking about that's a choice menu, we're doing now.
No, that's not my understanding.
No, that is, that, we are...
I'm sharing with you my results of conversations with, with staff.
It's, I, then you tell me, where are we not doing it now?
I'm not sure I can answer that question here, but I'm satisfied with the discussions of...
Then maybe we should follow the advice of this architect and do more study and find out where. That's why I wanted to postpone things and find out from Mr. Valley a little bit more than nitty-gritty. Now, I asked a few questions, but I couldn't get to all of them.
Let me propose to my colleagues the following. Since we have a motion in a second, let's see if the motion will pass. If it fails, then obviously, we will have to go back to something else.
So you're calling for the question?
Well, I can't call for the question because that's the mayor's job, I think.
No, it's not.
Oh, well, then I guess I am.
Okay, that takes a four-fifths vote to go on to voting. Who is in favor of going ahead and voting and ceasing the discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Clapper?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Grocott?
Got your four-fifths vote.
Okay.
All right. On the ordinance.
Councilmember Clapper?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Grocott?
No. All right, that takes us on to item 10B, which is certifying the final environmental impact report for Wheeler Plaza.
What about 10A?
Did I skip one? I'm sorry. Turned the page too quickly. Sorry. Yes, those fellows sitting in the back over there. So this is item 10A. I apologize. This is consideration of setting a hearing December 10th, 2012, to consider 2013 rates for residential and commercial solid waste collection services.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council, Brian Moore, Assistant City Manager. This is the time when we come before you each year to talk about solid waste rates. Just to give you a little overview of the process, each year, the city council is asked to set rates that would cover the cost of solid waste services, both garbage pickup and recycling services and other services for both residential and commercial customers. Prior to coming to the city council, this information is reviewed by the SBWMA, the South Bay Side Waste Management Authority, also known as Rethink Waste. The SBWMA staff reviews the contractor compensation for the money that's paid to, in this case, Recology for these, the collection services, as well as to the other contractor, South Bay Recycling, which operates the Shore Waste Center. The SBWMA staff develops the revenue requirement for each agency for board review and then the board approves that at the end of September and then staff follows that up by coming to you at your first meeting in October, which is tonight, to review the report. In this year's, or this coming year, in 2013, the annual rate change will have four elements. One is the calculation of how much money will be needed to be raised through the rates to cover what's called the revenue requirement, which is for the solid waste services in the coming year. There are also two reconciliations, or some people call them true-ups, and this is basically to compare the actual cost of service in 2011 versus the amount of money we collected. If we over-collected, Recology pays us back with interest. If we under-collected, as we did, we pay them the difference plus interest. And the interest is calculated at prime plus 1%, which is 4.25% at the current time. We also take into account for next year's rates, the 2012 estimated costs. This is a estimate through September and then next year, you'll see a similar format where you'll be looking at 2012 actual costs and 2013 estimates. Again, reconciliation plus interest. And finally, there is what's called the unscheduled services on Attachment Q. That is reviewed annually and there's an annual increase. So those are the major categories. In this year's report, the city of San Carlos is shown is in need of a 12% adjustment overall. And as you see by the, the numbers in front of you, the three components are 8.8% of that is the revenue requirement, the bulk of that are increases in costs for the Recology services. There's also a slight cost for disposal and processing. That's the cost of bringing the materials to the transfer station and then processing them either Ox Mountain or off-site. And that also, by the way, that $40,000 number includes the SBWMA budgetary costs. And then, we have city costs and franchise fees. These are costs that the city has to manage these programs. And this year, that number's actually a credit because we have removed certain items that we charged to the garbage rates in prior years. In 2011, actual costs, as you can see, there was a shortfall of $178,538. And so, there's, that amount plus interest is rolled over to next year's rates plus franchise fees. And similarly, in the current year, there's a, the current estimate is that we will have a slight shortfall and that that also is rolled into the rates plus interest. Talking briefly about Attachment Q, which you see most of the time for those folks who have backyard service versus curbside service. The annual rate is fixed based on an index. Last year, the increase was 1.67%. This year, the index shows 3.25%. So regardless of which of the different rate options that you pick tonight for the Prop 218, notice this Attachment Q adjustment will be a feature of that as well, as was the case this year. There have been questions about residential can migration. This is what, what has been happening since 20, or 2009, when the city began its organics program and we saw it increase further in 2011 when we went to weekly recycling. This is the situation where residents trade down can sizes as there's more recycling and less material going through the landfill. It's obviously, from an ecological standpoint, a good result, but obviously, from a rate standpoint, it causes problems because the census or the combination of rate categories that we project rates on in October, when we get to the following year, it turns out that the census is different. And this year, we're projecting, or actually, this year, we saw a difference in last year's actual rate versus projected of around $100, $125,000, which works out to about 1.7% of the rates. I think the good news on can migration is that it is slowing, that, you know, the latest numbers I've seen over the last six months suggest that we're now on track to see about 100 counts or cans trading down. Last year, it was roughly double that amount, so it's closer to 2.5 or 3%. And it talks again about the reasons for the cart migration. And it talks again about the reasons for the cart migration that I talked about earlier. This table, we showed you the last two years, and I bring it back again just to show you the comparison in terms of what does the service actually cost versus what are the rates cover. And you'll notice that at the 20 and 32 gallon sizes, which of course are the categories that people are migrating to, the rate doesn't cover the cost at all. The cost is about $37 at the 20 gallon level, and we're charging 17. The cost is almost $40 at the 32 gallon level, and we're charging 27.69. Conversely, at the higher two categories, 64 gallon and 96 gallon, we're charging more than the cost of service. In 64 gallon, it's $9 over, and at 96 gallon, it's $31 more than the actual cost. And as you can see in that change section, that's the part where we're seeing a bit of a slowing. There's some interest in looking at the rate adjustments this year by agency. You'll see that this year, about half the agencies have no rate increase, have a surplus, and the other half have adjustments. In San Carlos, we're the third highest based on the agencies in line for an adjustment. We also got a question over the weekend about what rate adjustments were made last year by agencies, and as you might imagine, the two tables are very related. The two agencies that either didn't have an adjustment, East Palo Alto, or had the lowest number of adjustments, San Carlos, are also the ones in line for the biggest increase this year. So there is a relationship. Last year, the rates were anywhere from 5.3% increase in San Carlos to 25% in Burlingame, and Burlingame is now in a surplus position. The two other agencies that went even above 25%, I thought I'd highlight those just because their adjustments, they're much more complex. In Atherton, they were attempting to get at the subsidy that we showed you earlier in San Carlos. So they adjusted their rates by different percentages at the different can sizes, with the highest adjustment going to the smallest can sizes. So they adjusted the 20 gallon container 35%, the 32 gallon 25%, the 64 9%, and their 96 gallon was no change last year. In Hillsborough, they took a different approach, but again, they were trying to get at their shortfall, which last year, both agencies, if I remember correctly, had 40% plus shortfalls, rather large. In Hillsborough, they imposed what they call a pickup charge, which is on the property tax bill. It's $25 per month, and that is in addition to the published rate. So that had the effect of significantly increasing garbage rates in Hillsborough. In addition to that, Hillsborough imposed this year a $39 one-time charge for paying off the allied waste debt. You probably will recall that San Carlos has already paid that off as of last year. So that would not apply here, but they did that to address that. And then they also, because they have a much more significant debt or true-up to Recology than we do, they're charging their customers $90 per year this year and another $90 per year next year to address the Recology debt. And then finally, they reduced their base rate somewhat because that's now added to the $25. So there are a number of approaches, as you can see, to rate adjustments. In the last year, most of them are similar to what we're talking about, a traditional percentage, but there are two examples of, of going after the subsidy issue. In terms of some options to think about, in the staff report, we talk about what's called the full rate option, which is to go with the numbers shown in the SBWMA analysis and to raise the rates 12%. Another approach is to do something similar to what you did last year, a partial rate option, where you cover most of the cost of the year-to-year change, but none of the true-ups, and then you roll over, in effect, 3.5% to next year, and that's kind of your starting increase before anything else comes into play. I've also thrown in a third option, based on some discussions we had earlier today with council members regarding the cart migration, you know, what could you do to begin to close that, those subsidies? And I would suggest, if you're interested in something like that, you could probably do either, again, the full or partial rate option, probably, most likely, the full rate option, and then add to that so much per month for the two lower can sizes. Obviously, you're already over the mark at 64 and 96, so you don't need to do that, but you could add a surcharge of X number of dollars per month to bring those two categories closer to covering the actual cost. And then, of course, regardless of which of these options you choose, you'll need to include in the Prop 218 rate, the attachment Q services at 3.25%. And then finally, next steps in this process is, assuming the council takes action tonight, we would issue a notice of proposed rate increase that would be sent out in the next two weeks. The council would hold the annual hearing at the first meeting in December, as you normally do, which is December 10th, and then the rates would be effective January 1st, and the billing for those new rates would go out February, because that is the cycle San Carlos is on. So with that, be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions? I have some too.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Moore, do you have any, can you give me any color on the profile of people who are using the cans that are large enough that they are generating the money that we're using to subsidize the smaller cans? In other words, I think it was the 64 and the 96 gallon, are those all residential? They're just really big?
We're talking about residential, yes.
Okay.
And I would imagine that in most cases, those are people with larger families typically.
Okay, but they wouldn't be like apartment buildings or something like that?
No, no, the apartment buildings are under the commercial category.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
Mr. Moore, could you reconcile the 100 to $125,000 that you say we're losing on migration with, with the PowerPoint you had up there that shows that there's just a difference of, in effect, 73 units that have slipped back, slipped in?
Well, there's, there's a couple, Councilmember.
Seems, those don't, don't work, so there's got to be another story to this.
Well, Vice Mayor, the, there's two different things that we're talking about there. First of all, I'm comparing the amount of money that we are estimated to bring in this year versus the amount we said. In other words, last year, when we issued the rate notice for 2012, we said to the public, we're going to collect a little over $7.5 million.
Right.
And in fact, if you use the SBWMA analysis, it will tell you we're actually on track to collect only 7.4 million.
Right.
Based on the, the numbers that we saw, through March, we were on track to see 200 cans migrate, and then in the last six months, it's slowing to more like the pace of 100 cans. What I'm suggesting is that a portion of that number, because the, the reports do not specifically pull out cart migration, so a portion of that 100 to 125,000 is due to cart migration.
Okay.
Yeah, the staff, we think it's a significant part, but again, there's no.
I mean, I'm just doing, I just did some quick math, and it just seems like it's like 15 or $20,000 at the most, if you just use your numbers, the 61 and the 12.
Well, the estimate that was given to us in July, the estimate of, for cart migration loss was $98,000 per year.
Uh-huh.
However, in the last couple months, the, the rate is slowing. So if you use the 100 cans per year assumption versus the, which is the latest numbers as of literally last month, versus the numbers we had in the summer, that's more on track to be 50 or 60,000.
Again, I apologize, but just do some math for me. What's, when you say migration, I'm looking at, I'm looking at a difference of $10 or, I mean, we're looking at cost or rate? I mean, it's, to me, it's simple algebra, and I can't come up with anything close to those numbers. I just can't come up with anything close to them with, with what you've given us. That's why there's got to be more to the story.
Well, and again, I'll have to see if I have the spreadsheet with me, but again.
But do you, do you see what I'm trying to, is there, is there a simple algebraic thing where you say, we, 60, 61 people changed to, or, or, or I guess, I guess this is just additional cans, I guess, is what you're showing us here? You're not showing us any, any migration on this, on that PowerPoint item?
Right, I, yeah, I have a spreadsheet here, and essentially, what it shows, this is comparing March of 2012 to July 2011. There is a swing of 179 containers moving to 20 gallons, which is a loss of $37,000. A swing of 126 containers, and then as you go down here, and again, this is through March, the loss is, averages $8,200 a month, or $98,494 per year.
Again, is my mistake that I was reading this PowerPoint as the, as the, as the change, and that's not the case? These are just new add-ons or whatever.
Well, I get, exactly, I think it's an incremental change.
Yeah.
March to September, it's not the cumulative change.
Right, and that's why I couldn't get it to come out.
Right, and I guess the difference, you know, and again, it's one of those things about, you know, how many tables perhaps we need to show you?
Yeah.
Is that the March to September tables suggest that the rate of migration is slowing.
Understand.
Yeah.
Okay. I was, you know, I spoke to you today, and if I could, well, I'll wait for the comments, and it's not a question, so I'll wait.
All right, other questions?
Just a couple. Mr. Moore, this attachment Q for the backyard service, is that, is that rate charged only to the people who use it, or is it spread out among every?
Yes.
Okay, so it's charged just to the people who use it? Okay. The other, the other question, I just want to confirm, you said that when we look at 12% rate increase, we think, oh my God, 12%? But in actuality, it's $3.32 a month, is that correct?
I believe in the staff report, and again, obviously.
32 gallon service?
Yeah, it's a couple bucks a month.
And the bulk of the ratepayers have 32 gallons?
That's correct.
That is correct. Okay, so the bulk of the people are going to get a $3.32% increase?
Per month.
Per month, yes.
Correct.
Okay. And then the last question was, if we don't do this, and we, you mentioned an alternative is a partial rate increase of?
Mm-hmm.
8.5%.
Right.
That 3.5%, pardon my, my pun, get, kicks the can down the road, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So what's the effect then on next year's? If we say, well, we don't want to do that, we want to do 8.5, let's?
Right.
Put this 3.5 off because we don't want to impose that.
Well, Councilmember Collins, that, that's essentially what you did, the council did last year, and what happens is that amount then goes to the following year, plus the prime plus 1% of the 4, 4.25% interest, and it comes up in those true-ups we were showing you earlier. So essentially, what happens is, I think, I heard earlier today, the analogy of like borrowing on your credit card, it goes on your tab, if you will, with interest. So sooner or later, you do have to make it up, it's just a question of at what rate you implement it.
Okay, and then the last question is, I noticed that in, I don't want to pick on them, but Belmont had a 43.9% rate increase. What, what happened there that they ended up with that?
Well, to be clear, what, what that chart shows you is that's the amount of money needed to get back to balance. That's not necessarily the amount of money that each of these agencies will raise. Now, as you, as you probably saw in the, let me go back to that rate adjustment table. See, this is rate requirements note, so it says, if Belmont wanted to go to zero this year, and I'll tell you in a minute why they don't plan to do that, they would need a 43.9% increase, not unlike some of the increases we saw from Atherton and Hillsborough. But instead, as you saw, Belmont last year, for example, raised their rates 11.6%. It's Belmont's intent, as I understand it, to repay their debt to Recology and to catch up on the rates over a four-year period with interest. And again, similar to what the council did last year and could do this year, you could stretch that out and kind of guarantee that you have annual increases and, and do it over a multi-year period. I think, as you look at this table, what we saw last year, and again, it's, it's a little tricky as we talk about what other agencies are doing, because they're hearing this the same weeks that you are. So we never really know what the other agencies are deciding to do during the cycle we're considering it, is it's pretty clear, looking, some of these changes, particularly some of the more dramatic ones, is that many of the agencies attempted to get back to zero, and in fact, looking at the results this year, half of them did indeed achieve that.
Okay. So, final question. If, let me go ahead with the 12.5, 12.5%?
12%
12, the 12% increase. And I won't hold you to this, but what's your, what's your feeling as to what you might be coming back to us with next year?
There's a couple interesting things happening next year. First of all, this is the last year, and I think we mentioned it in the staff report, that the labor costs are covered by the collective bargaining agreement that was in effect when allied waste left and Recology came in. In other words, I guess you could say that Recology inherited these new collective bargaining agreements. Starting in 2014, all of the employees, I believe, will be under what's called the labor index. And SBWMA staff believes that that will result in the year-to-year base costs going up something on the order of 2.5 to 2.34% rather than what we saw this year in San Carlos, where they went up around 9%. So if that indeed comes to pass, and we're all, you know, led to believe that could happen, that should, you know, reduce rates in San Carlos. The other factor, of course, is, is, you know, council members have been discussing earlier, is the true-ups for, you know, 2012 and 2013, what are those plus interest? And that's really a function of, you know, not only how much rate did you carry over last year, but also how much rate you might carry over this year.
Through the chair, can I ask a clarifying question?
I'm, I'm all done. Go right ahead. Any questions?
Oh, if that's following on?
Yeah, it was.
Question, I would, I would like to defer my questions to, to that, if that would be okay?
Just to be clear, Mr. Moore, when you said that next year, it comes under the labor index, it isn't that we would expect our costs to go down, we would expect the rate of increase to go down?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. I'm curious as to how the costs for the various community-wide events, like the e-waste drop-off and the document shredding, is that factored into these residential rates? Or how does that?
I can probably ask our, the folks from Recology and SBWMA to comment, but I can tell you that normally, there's one of those events per year, both the e-shred and the compost, but if we wanted to have additional events, I believe, one of them would cost us an additional $600 and the other 1,200. Is that pretty accurate? I'm seeing nods, okay? So those aren't significant pieces of the total cost.
Because there were items similar to that listed in attachment Q, things that didn't sound like something a residential, you know, owner would be likely to do, but I didn't know if that was a piece of how these different increases were factored in based on an estimated number of events.
They're part of the baseline cost, is that a fair statement, folks? Or, yeah, why, Mr. Feldman from SBWMA may come up and analyze.
Good evening, Cliff Feldman with South Bay Side Waste Management Authority, Rethink Waste. And I think what you're getting at, Councilmember Clapper, is the attachment Q costs that are related to events and one-time items. Well, those are at the council or the city's discretion to apply those costs on the overall compensation package. So they don't apply unless you subscribe to them, similar to if a resident does not apply to backyard service, they don't get charged for it. To answer your question, I believe, on the e-shred events and the compost giveaway events and so forth, every jurisdiction is entitled to one compost giveaway event annually provided by Recology at no additional cost. That's included in the overall base compensation package. In addition to that, each jurisdiction is entitled to one document, confidential document destruction event that can be scheduled through the company. Again, that's included in the overall, for, for lack of a better term, a value-added service provided by the company in their overall compensation package. An additional document destruction event is $1,200, if you want a second or more. On the compost giveaway events, there's some incremental costs, you can have one, two, 10 of those a year, and the cost would be about $150 to $350 for each additional one after the first one. On the e-scrap events, those were events that our agency typically sponsored, and we'll continue to sponsor those at, at the discretion of, of our board and direction of councils such as yours, and the costs for those have been very small. Overall, we spent about $3,000 to $5,000 annually promoting the events system-wide for all our agencies. On the e-scrap events, the revenue generated from the stuff collected typically pays for the cost of the event itself. So very minimal cost on the e-scrap, but there's really limited value for those events at this point, because through your door-to-door household hazardous waste collection, you can put out the e-scrap materials and have, you can call for that service weekly as, as many times throughout the year as you'd like. In addition, Recology provides twice-annual bulky good collection service, and you can put out a computer or a monitor with that service as well. So we're kind of getting past the idea of having, having public agencies pay for e-scrap events, there's a lot of opportunities, including bringing the material straight to Shoreway. So we're, our budget this year went from $4,000 to promote those events last year to $1,000 this year. So we don't anticipate a lot of demand to promote those events.
Thank you. One, one more question. I know we're talking about setting the rates for next year.
Mm-hmm.
Would it be, and then when we start looking at possibly reducing the subsidy in a way that would phase the subsidy out over, over a period of time, would there be any value in looking at setting the rates for a two-year period or a three-year period? at setting the rates for a two-year period or a three-year period and identifying what that phase-out of the subsidies would be?
I think if there's council interest, we could certainly do that. And one of the things that we, I've seen a couple cities do this year, is actually hire a garbage rate consultant to come in and look at things like two- or three-year rates. So that's something, if there's council interest, we could look at that. Again, like a budget or anything else, these are rate projections, so whether they come in on projection or not, hard to say.
But through the chair, you wouldn't be able to do it on this one. It'd be for next year.
Not unless the council was willing to delay this and get into retroactive rates, which we did once before and was-
Right. Because it's sort of unpopular.
Right. Okay. I just wanted to make sure that everybody understood.
Yeah.
Any other questions? I just have a few. First one is regarding going to a smaller can. Just looking down the road and how that affects our rates, is there ever a savings for using a smaller can? Not to the homeowner, obviously, because rates, you know, with can migration and so forth, they continue to rise. But just for Recology itself, could we arrive at a day where there's so much, so little garbage actually going in a can that has to then go to landfill, right? Whereas everything else can go to recycling and so forth. Do you achieve a point where your costs start coming down because you don't have as much in the landfill?
Well, I mean, to go to the cost table, I mean, there is a slight difference, obviously, as the can size gets smaller. I suspect part of that is kind of, to your point, Mayor, about less material going into the landfill, hence the cost is a little less. And we've also even talked at some point experimentally about going to a every-other-week garbage service for those who have 20-gallon containers and find even that's rather large for them. So there's a possibility of those actual costs coming down. And since we are paying Recology and South Bay actual costs, you're right. In theory, as more people go to those cans, the overall cost should be less. The dilemma then we get into, as some of the other questions were, is collecting enough to cover the cost of those smaller cans? And that's kind of, as you can see on this chart, where we're having problems. As everybody is moving to smaller cans from 64 to 32 and then 32 to 20, it's great for the environment, but unfortunately, given the way our rates are structured right now, you know, we're losing a lot of money and we're missing our estimates as a result. So it's kind of a, there's good news and bad news, I guess I could say, by this phenomenon.
My other question is just in terms of, I wish it was on the chart, actually. You know, you give us the, where is it? I guess it's the last page here, the rate chart, Exhibit A. It'd be really cool if this chart had 20-gallon and so forth in the price. But in San Carlos, how many 20-gallon things do we have? Oh, you got it there.
I think it was just up-
Was it in our packet? Did I miss it somehow?
It was just, right here, the second column.
Yeah, he's got it up here. Okay. Yeah, and that would be really cool to have in our packet as opposed to just up there. So there you've got it, and we've got residential, that's just residential.
That's residential, that's right.
So you got about 8,600. Do we know how many we have on commercial, on the commercial side?
Ah.
Cans. I know we got commercial bins, and that's a whole different thing.
We have that data. I didn't bring it, but yeah.
That'd be interesting to see.
Yeah, and I guess as far as historically, and I was talking to the city manager about this earlier, I think what's interesting is over time, there was a time when most people had 64-gallon containers. As you can see now, most people have 32-gallon containers. So it doesn't make you wonder if someday most people will eventually get to having 20-gallon containers.
Does this, when this says residential, that includes multifamily and so forth?
No.
No.
Multifamily is on the commercial rate schedule.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, and that's probably where a lot of the cans come from, is either smaller businesses or multifamily. Is that right?
Uh, no. They're on a completely different schedule. They have, what do they call them, metal bins and things like yard containers, that sort of-
Well, not all, though. I see, like, you know, if you, I live on Walnut Street, so if you go further down Walnut Street, there are, I would say, some of those buildings have maybe 15 units, 20 units. And you go by on garbage pickup day, and they have all their little, all their blue cans out there, all their black cans, et cetera.
Right.
And they pull them all out to the street just as though they were a single-family resident.
Right.
So where do they fall?
Well, Exhibit A, you'll see that we have commercial can service, which also includes multifamily, and that shows you those rates. And you'll notice that those are a little bit lower than the residential rates primarily because those rates do not include organic and compost service. But if you go to Exhibit A in the packet, you'll-
Well, now, that's, that's not to, you know, be testy here, but I don't see that as being necessarily the case because there are multi, again, these smaller apartment buildings that use the cans, just like the residences do, when they, when the compost things were delivered, I believe those people received those. I know at that time, yeah, I've talked to people that live in apartments like that, and they received the compost.
Oh, I'll ask-
The big green, the big green. I'm talking about the little things. The big green.
The green card.
The yard waste.
They got to have the big green to do compost. Otherwise, they can't do it.
Yeah.
They're not supposed to.
Yeah. I lived in a building like that, that had, yeah, I've seen that. And, you know, just walking my dog around town, you walk by the smaller units, and they have all the cans that you would have if you were a resident. And it's all out there.
Right. And I'll check with our friends from Recology or Rethink, but I believe that those-
They should know, they drive their trucks.
... schedule, right? Go ahead.
Yeah, come on up. Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of council. Your observations are correct. There are many multifamily dwellings who subscribe to organics services. Any multifamily is a dwelling that has five or more units. Anybody one to four would be classified as a residential unit. And so those would have, by default, organic services. But anything five and up would have to subscribe to that, and they do.
And yet they pay a lower rate.
They pay a smaller rate, but then they have to pay for the organics piece.
Extra.
Extra, yes.
Oh, I see. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right. Well, it'd be interesting to have those statistics. And the reason, I mean, I'm going to bring this up in discussion, but the reason, Mr. Moore, I'm thinking about all that is because even if I just take, you know, the $8 million roughly and were to divide it by all the accounts that fall under, I guess you'd have to look at the commercial bins separately. But if you just took all the accounts in San Carlos and divided that $8 million and came up with a flat tax, if you will, I'm not sure what that figure would be, but I was just doing some quick math, and it looks like it'd be about $25 a month currently. I could be way off because I don't know these commercial numbers, so I'm just guessing. And that might be interesting because for right now, and the other reason I asked the question about savings is because, well, you'll see when we get to discussion, but that's why I asked all those questions.
Yeah, fair enough. And just, Mayor, two comments, and we touched upon it earlier. Obviously, that kind of concept is sort of what Hillsborough was getting to in their recent move to put $25 per month on the property tax bill. You also see this, by the way, in East Palo Alto, where all of the residential customers get a 96-gallon bin and they pay one rate. So there are variations of what you're talking about. And I would suggest that if the council's interested in that or in Councilmember Clapper's idea about multi-year rates, those are the sorts of things that we could pursue, working with a rate expert as far as really digging in the numbers and bringing you scenarios. So if that's something you're interested in, be interested in getting that sort of feedback or direction from you because it's something we could pursue.
So one more question, then.
Sure.
If tonight, from discussion, we were to change Exhibit A in any fashion, really, where does that put us with going out for a hearing and so forth? Can, you know?
Uh, well, you have a couple of choices. One is if you modify Exhibit A and instruct staff to move forward with the notice, we will. And we'll have the hearing in December. The rates will be effective on schedule. If, on the other hand, you ask us to more significantly change the rates where we need to spend some time in analysis, we may get into the situation we were in a couple years back where we delayed the rates a couple times, and then there was an issue with the multiple months of retroactivity.
Right. So if we do it significantly, you don't have to go do some number crunching in these factors.
Yeah, and that's why I was suggesting that what you might want to do tonight is come up with what you're comfortable with, moving us forward this year, and also secondarily, seeing if there's council interest in also having us do some more fundamental review of the rates. And if you were interested in that, I'd be particularly interested in any council comment or direction on what kind of studies you'd like to see. Would you like to see the flat rate that you're referring to, the multi-year concept Councilmember Clapper's referring to, or maybe there are other ideas on the dais that you'd like to see?
Okay, let us discuss that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great.
All right.
Could I ask that you put the slide up that lists the options that you were presenting to us, so we can have it as a reference?
Yeah, absolutely.
Absolutely.
Okay. Discussion. Unless somebody would like to make a motion, but if they think there's enough here that you want to do a motion, and then we might change it a little bit, but otherwise, let's do some discussion.
So my understanding is, for the public hearing, as long as what is mentioned in the public hearing, we can't exceed that when we have the public hearing. But we could set the rates at something lower than that when we have the public hearing. Am I understanding that correctly, or do we have to say right now exactly what the rate would be?
Mr. Moore is nodding yes, so.
That's correct. You could notice for a-
So we could say it was going to be increased by 100%, and then we could come up with something less than that.
Yes. Some cities, to give you an example, have done something like that, where they've said, we're going to hold a Prop 218 hearing in December to discuss rates up to 12%, let's say, and the council may elect to perhaps adopt them at 10%.
Okay. Good to know. I didn't know that.
Can I ask a clarifying question about that?
Go ahead.
The 12, in your example, Mr. Moore, the 12%, what if we were to apply different percentage increases to the different sizes of cans, just hypothetically? So some were 8%, and some were 10%, and some were 20%. What would it read like? Or could we just say on average 12%?
Well, I would think that if the council direction to staff is to have different percentages per can, and you can do that tonight, or up to a certain amount per can or a flat dollar amount, any of the above, you could do that tonight. And what would happen, and I'll ask my colleague, Mr. Rubens, but I assume that what we would do then is we would have a Prop 218 notice that said, for commercial customers, the increase is 12%. For residential customers, it is whichever combination of things the council desires, and that would be what's in the Prop 218. Just to be really clear, the 218 notice you have tonight, like all the materials, is a draft for the council's use. You can modify it as you see fit, and based on your direction and vote, we'll modify that document later this week in terms of what we send out.
All right. You had another question, Mr. Clapper?
No, just a comment. I mean, regardless of what we decide tonight, I like Councilman Clapper's idea of, at some point, going to a two or possibly a three-year budgeting cycle. I think the long-term message to the community ought to be that we're trying to achieve rate stability. So I'd like to, I'd be in favor of a discussion of that.
All right. Let's just take that item as, I don't think Mr. Moore needs that as an action item, but just as a consent of the council, one way or the other. Is that a thumbs-up idea or a thumbs-down idea?
I, well, I already, I had already mentioned it, but I, pushing it out because of what Mr. Moore said about the increase in labor rates is expected to be doing something different in the future, it seems like it would be easier than to do two or three years starting after this year.
All right.
You know, I think the concern I have about that is, I don't know to the extent my colleagues have had a chance to read the contract. I actually spent some time over the last week reviewing the sections that talk about how the pricing is set. While it's true that next year, 2014, the labor cost component is capped based on a federal impact index, there's quite a few other components that also have indexes and whatnot attached to them, which simultaneously means there could be some significant increases in those, and they make it difficult to forecast because you don't know what's going to happen. You're basically in the business of trying to forecast inflation and whatnot. So my concern actually is, it depends on what we talk about in terms of achieving stability for the community. You know, one approach to stability is to say, we're going to charge whatever the current, to fully recover the current cost. And if that's 12% one year and 2% the next year and 8% after that, that's what you're doing. You're never kicking anything down the road. Another is to try and triangulate this and say, well, we think over a multi-year projection, we could probably do this average rate over time. But I just want to caution people that there's a lot of imponderables in that.
Mr. Griselli, I see you are getting ready to approach the mic. Go.
Well, sort of piggybacking on what Mr. Olbert said, I didn't read the contract, but I went to all the meetings, which is probably the biggest mistake I have.
It's probably better.
But buy it all the time in the world. And I still don't understand some of this, to be quite honest. But anyway, if you try to project out, as Councilmember Olbert said, once you say, let's say we're going to make this 8% this year, 9% the year after, 9% the next year after, that's what everybody's going to remember. They're not going to remember that it's just going to change. So if it goes down, that's great. But if it goes up, as Councilmember Olbert said, especially since we haven't got the new labor thing, I wouldn't have a problem, once we get to the new labor one, to say, I think it's going to, it's going to give us a chance, at least see the first year out, what it's going to look like. But I would be very reticent to start picking a number because, well, I just would be, because I'm afraid, exactly as you said, is that there could be some additional items. And once you say, well, we're just going to do nine, all of a sudden, it's 12, and now what do we do? We say, well, we raise it 12, and, well, you said nine, you know, anyway. So that's my concern with trying to do out, at least today.
Right.
I think we get some more information in the next two year or two, I think would be possible that we might be able to know how it's going to work.
Right. That's a good point, and I wasn't suggesting that we do that now.
No, I'm not saying we were.
Right.
I'm just looking at that projection. There's a lot of moving parts in this, which I was going to comment on later when everyone's done.
So my comment to that would be, for one, Ms. Clapper didn't say, she obviously is acknowledging the labor agreements. She's saying, don't do it now, but a year out or whenever those labor agreements kick in. My point to it would be, I like your point, and my flip side to that coin is, if you do two-year or three-year or whatever the number is, and also if other agencies follow suit, that sends a message to these guys and everybody that's involved in their industry that we want to see more stability and we want to see things, yeah, they can tick up, perhaps, but we don't want them ticking up, you know, hugely. And one of the reasons we, as an agency representing the public, are taking this approach of two- or three-year budgeting is because we do want to see stability. We don't like going back to our ratepayers every year and having an 8% increase one year and 15 the next, and then 13, and then 12, and back down to five. We want to flatten that out and make it more, you know, something that people can deal with, and for a couple of years, a homeowner can budget for their, you know, for these kinds of services.
Well, through the chair, and I'm not being critical of what you said, and I'd like to flatten it out, too, but the contract is the contract, it's a 10-year contract. Whatever it says, those numbers are going to move. They have no control over some of those numbers. Those, it's like when I get into my comment about migration. I mean, okay, I'll say it now. Migration is like a catch-22. You raise the rates, in my opinion, on the, on any of the, on the third, let's say you raise them 12%. I guarantee you, there's a proportion of people that pay on the 32-gallon, they're going to move to the 20. Now, next year, you raise it again, there's more people that are going to move. it again, there's more people that are going to move. It's a never-ending-- you'll never stop. It'll never stop, in my opinion, or until, I guess, we run to the-- we eliminate them completely, the 32-gallon can, but people are going to keep migrating. Therefore, those numbers are going to be in that percentage. And that's unfortunate, but the contract has a lot, as Mr. Olbert said, a lot of moving parts that Recology doesn't necessarily control. It's just, some of it's internal to what we have.
And what we would be saying, though, to be fair to Ms. Clapper's idea, is we'd be saying to staff, "Can you look at this and report back to us, these things that we're talking about? Is there good, or is there bad? More, you know, do a, what is it, you know, the two columns, the good and the bad. Turns out there's more bad than good, all right, then we're not going to do it."
I agree with that.
Are we interested in even looking at it?
I agree with that. Ms. Clapper had the right idea. I think we should look at this, but I don't think, in a practical standpoint personally, it's going to, whatever.
Just down the line, should we look at it and give staff some direction to look at this kind of two-year idea, or not? That's all we're asking, you know, and they--
Can I ask a question before we do that, just of staff? What kind of staff time are we looking at? I mean, I don't want you guys spinning your wheels if it doesn't make a lot of sense.
In talking to the agencies this year that have done multi-year projections and other analysis, what they've typically done is they've brought in some outside help, HF&amp;H typically, and they've spent $10,000, $15,000, something like that. And what they've done this year is they've tied it so the results of that report come in in October, so they can tie it to the rates. What I would suggest one scenario might be is, for the different options the council might want to consider, is that you move ahead on this year's rates, but then direct staff to say, "Look at some of these things, and we'll bring it back, you know, this time next year, and then we'll have a considerable amount of time." Obviously, we'll do as much work at the staff level as we can, but we probably will need a little bit of outside assistance. But basically, on my discussions with a couple of their agencies, it didn't sound like a very high-ticket item, so I thought it's probably worth doing just so that you have some more options to work with in the following year. And I would also agree with the comments I heard on the dais about starting to do that work as the labor numbers go into an index, because certainly, the SBWMA staff is of the belief that that will significantly slow the rate of increase, but we'll obviously have our first look at all those numbers next October, and we'll see if that's the case.
I think you've already alluded to this, but I would have imagined, actually, if we were to give that direction, that Mr. Moore would simply go to the SBWMA meeting as our representative of our community and say, "Our community is interested in this. Are there any other communities interested in this?" And would Recology study that, instead of us studying it?
Well, and I guess to the mayor's--
Would the SBWMA study it, I guess?
Right. And I guess to the mayor's point, I'm a little ahead of you. I did raise that suggestion several times this year, because I saw this problem coming. And unfortunately, I didn't have a whole lot of support on the board, and later, I found out that was in part due to the fact that two of them just hired the outside resources and were doing it while I was talking about how it was such a great idea.
Okay.
And now that I know that, I guess my observation to you, and you're dead on, because that's exactly the path staff followed, is I think next time, rather than, with all due respect to the SBWMA board, rather than lobbying them further, I think I'm going to follow the lead of my two colleagues, and next time, just hire the assistants myself.
All right. So, Mr. Olbert, you were the one that asked that question, or was it over here?
It was Mr. Collins.
Okay.
I did. I just, you know, part of this, and, you know, Councilmember Clapper brought this up, but it got me to thinking, is that, long-term, one of our jobs is to explain to people why we do what we do. And one of the things that people ask from time to time is, "Why don't you do some long-term planning? Why don't you do some long-term budgeting? Why do our rates go up 18% one year, and 3% the next?" And I think that, even if we don't do it, it's good to have the discussion, so that we can say to people, "Here's why we don't do it." I think that's part of being public servants, is being able to explain either why we do something, or why we didn't do something that some, you know, a casual observer might think is a great idea.
All right. So I'm still trying to weigh. Are you still trying to weigh?
Well, I mean, based on the discussion, I think the council indicated that they might have an interest in the future in looking at multiple-year rates, but not any sooner than next year.
All right.
And based on that, I think we'd plan on incorporating that into our calculations and process for next year's rates.
Very good. I think that's good enough. Let's carry on with the rates themselves, then.
May I bring up another point that concerns me about the proposed rate schedule? The existence of those subsidies, I think it makes-- made perfect sense, from a public policy point of view, to try and encourage people to divert waste out of the landfill process. But long-term existences of those kind of subsidies, particularly when we're involved with setting rates every year, often end badly. And I guess what I'm getting at is, I personally would like to see us begin the process of eliminating those subsidies.
I completely concur.
You know, they serve the purpose. There may be a little bit of backflow if we start reducing them. I personally don't think that'll probably happen, but I think we just need to start walking down that road, because we're going to have to do it eventually, anyway. It's going to get worse.
So are you suggesting we change these rates?
What I would, what I'm suggesting--
Just go with what we have.
What I'm suggesting is that we begin the process of narrowing those subsidies, which were on the chart that Mr. Moore had up earlier.
When do we begin?
2013.
Yeah, well, option three is one particular way of starting it. As if you could refresh my memory on how big they were, they were, I remember them being a little bit surprising.
Mm-hmm.
And so we've got, we've got, basically, on the small end, we've got $20 can a month, and dropping to 12. So I suppose, if I may ask, staff's thinking was that eight and four thing was that over a period of two and a half years, roughly, three years, you'd get rid of the subsidy?
Correct. I was thinking that if you did that two years in a row, that plus the annual increase, you'd pretty much do it, and you might also be able to still hold maybe a $5 differential between 20 and 32. That's what I was sort of thinking.
Okay.
So what is that on the 20-gallon can? What percentage increase would that be? If you're increasing it by 12% plus adding $8, so that's like a 50%, 60% increase, right? Am I--
Wouldn't you be at a higher can rate than the 32-gallon at that point?
Well, I'm not sure what 12% times that plus $4 would be.
Well, let's see. On Exhibit A, 12%, because right now, it's flat 12% across the board, right? So 12% is $2, roughly $2, so $8 would be about 50%.
Right.
So you'd be talking about a 60% increase.
Well, I was just thinking, if you just keep it at percentages, and you say, "Okay, the 96-gallon, which there's very few of, 0%, no increase."
I'm sorry, I missed that last point, what you said.
Starting with the 96-gallon. And, well, I have an issue with charging it, just based on the size of the trash can, anyway, because now you're neglecting the number of blue recycling bins they may have lined up and down the sidewalk, and the number of yard waste cans. But, which is something that I would like to see as part of that multi-year study. But if we're just going to do it based on the size of the trash cans, to say, "Okay, for the 96-gallon, they're subsidizing everyone else's rate significantly, no increase for the next year." For 64-gallon, it would be an 11% increase, 13% increase for the 32-gallon, and a 20% increase, a 15% increase for the 20-gallon. So there's all slightly different increases for residential. Stick with the 12% for commercial. And so the bulk of the number of cans is at 32-gallon, and they would be getting the 13% increase, so slightly over what we're currently recommending, to start to smooth it out. And then, we could keep adding, changing the percentages, but doing it, keeping it all in percentages, instead of a flat rate plus a percentage.
And now, you're just looking at residential--
More comparable. Just looking at these, just looking at these right here.
Yeah.
Through the chair, again, I just, you're basically just going to make a 50-cent difference in the 20-gallon. I mean, you're really not going to-- again, just, you said 15%. 12% is $2.08, okay? So you're basically going to be another 50 cents.
That's what I'm just saying, because I was saying, "Okay, if you're saying a 50% or 60% increase, how's that going to come out?"
I understand. But I'm saying, if you're, I don't know if your point is trying to get them closer, it isn't going to--
Let's hold on a second here.
And I'm not sold on those numbers. I was just kind of picking an idea of giving a tiered set of percentages, but having them be all percentages, instead of percentage plus a flat rate.
So she's still at discussion.
So that's just, I was just throwing that out for discussion, and I'm not wedded to any of those numbers in any way.
The reason I interjected is because I was going to suggest, if you're just talking about residential, and then you want to add the commercial as they are, and make it a motion, we could see if it's got any legs or not, but if you got a second. But you're saying you just threw it out as an idea.
I'm not prepared to put that out there as a motion, no. I just wanted to kind of--
Just trying to move things along, that's all.
Move the discussion along the way with just an idea.
Okay.
May I ask, staff, through the chair, what would be on the plus-eight and plus-four alternative of phasing out the subsidy? What would be the impact on the high end of the 64 and the 96-gallon? Presumably, there's a negative there, right?
I would, and again, I'm kind of like Councilmember Clapper. I'm just throwing things out. I was suggesting that you do 12 on those two, but no dollar surcharge. And again, the notion was, because they're already paying more than the cost. But you're right, Councilmember Olbert, you could, in fact, simultaneously reduce them as, you know, or zero them out, as Councilmember Clapper suggests.
Well, I see what you're saying. So we would be reducing one-half of the subsidy, but having the people who are creating, generating the income for the subsidy now continue to pay the higher cost.
Yes. You could do that, or as Councilmember Clapper suggests, you could either have a zero increase for, say, the 96-gallon folks, or even drop it a bit. I mean, again, all are possible.
I would suggest it's a little too soon to go with that kind of idea, because, you know, I can remember sitting on the council with, you know, Royce, and who's our buddy that produces--
Louis.
Louis. I mean, it was, you know, back then, it was a far different council, and everybody was jumping on board with, "Let's get people to go green, and, you know, use less of their trash containers, and really encourage this, and we're going to..." I mean, you know, the thought was, "Yeah, you're subsidizing, but we really want people to use those cans less."
But now they've got the cans, so it's a--
But it hasn't been that long.
It's a playing field.
Yeah, it is. But I think if you did that right now, those people are going to look at that like, "Wait a minute, you're rewarding those people with the 96 and the 64-gallon cans, exactly what you were trying to get us out of."
But, but one of the things that we've been trying to do here in this city, when we look at how we do things with planning, is when people can come in for services, we try to price those services based on what it actually costs to provide them. So why are we doing this mixed-message thing of saying, "Yeah, we do that, but then, here, let's assign some rates to solid waste collection that really don't have anything to do with cost?" We're just going to go, "Oh, that sounds like a good one, because we want to reward people for being ecologically sound." The cans are out there--
Do you want me to answer that question? I'll answer the question.
Yeah, okay, good.
I'll answer the question, because the answer to that, if Mr. Royce, who was here earlier, if he were here, he would say, "Because we're trying to get people not just to migrate to smaller cans, we're trying to get people to migrate to zero waste. Everything is recycled. Nothing goes in that black can."
No, wait. Zero waste and recycled are different things.
Yes.
Zero waste would be, you have no cans out in front at all, because you buy products that don't have anything you have to put in the blue bins. So I think that's why this really doesn't address those environmental issues, because we're still encouraging people to use plenty of cans, and bottles, and cardboard, because we're not charging them for the number of blue bins. They could have six blue bins out there, and a little teeny 20-gallon. So it's a mismatch. And I'm not saying we can resolve it right now, but I'm saying, my thought is, a little teeny message, maybe we don't want to do the $8 increase, which is a 50% increase on people, when they look at it as a percentage, even though we're not saying it's not a percentage. That's why I was saying, so we just kind of change it a little bit, and start sending the message. The charges are for sending the trucks out to pick the stuff up--
Yeah.
And to haul it away, and to handle it. Because even if you're being environmentally sound and recycling everything, that, all that stuff still has to be processed somewhere. It doesn't just go away in the truck and then disappear into some other--
See, that's why I would like to know, how many customers do we have in total? Because at some point, you look at this and you just say, "You know what? We pay $8 million a year for garbage pickup, and we've got, you know, 15,000 customers, commercial and residential, not including the, you know, I'd look at the big bins differently. I guess you'd have to include that in the $8 million, but you just look at that, and you go, "Okay, flat tax. Everybody, if you have this kind of service, you pay this much. If you have the big bins, you pay that by the yard, and there you go."
Which I think, if I remember correctly, was what staff said, was a Palo Alto did?
East Palo Alto.
East Palo Alto. Everybody gets one-size can.
Yeah, East Palo Alto.
I'd just like to say that I think Councilmember Clapper has made a number of good points, and while it's enlarging the scope of the thing we're asking staff to come back to talk to us about next year, I think we ought to make that grist for the discussion, too. So, may I ask, have staff put back up their specific proposal that had the page that had the plus-eight, plus-four on it? Because I am thinking to, we do have to come up with something here. The comment I was going to make was, and to some extent, I think we're getting a little bit nuanced when we talk about percentages versus dollar increases, but it might be a little bit less shocking to people if we were to go with something like Option Three, if we phrase it as plus 12% across the board for everybody, and then plus-eight and plus-four to start beginning reducing the subsidy. Because if we come out and say, "Well, some people are going to get hit with a 60% increase, and some people are going to get hit with a 12% increase," that's going to, I think, create a need for more of an explanation than we could encompass just by something along these lines. So I guess I'm slightly disagreeing with your--
No, I like the idea of proposing that for the public hearing, because it will certainly get a reaction from people. Or possibly, we'll get a reaction from people. And we could always, it can always, actually, the rates can always be set something less than that, but at least that gives us the option to discuss it in a public hearing, where we can get input from the community. So I would support that.
Well, I mean--
What?
No, I'm just saying, I know what I'd do if you raised my rates 50%. I'd cover and say, "Lower my rates." So I mean, whether we discuss it tonight, or whether we discuss it then--
But that would be you, but who--
Nobody's going to come and say, "Thank you very much for doing it." They're going to say, "Why are my gosh darn rates high?" And, I mean, we either stand it, again, I know we have to have a public hearing, and the folks are going to come in, but nobody's going to say, "Thanks." I mean, I just want to make sure everybody understands that.
Well, no one's going to say thanks to the 12% either.
I understand. But I'm just saying, if you come in with eight and four, to hear the public, I know what they're going to say, I mean, and we want to hear them, but they're going to say the same thing.
It's exactly what I was saying, that why I'm uncomfortable with eight and four. But I think it's something that we could put out as an announcement for the public hearing, and then have that discussion at that point.
So if I, I just want to make sure I understand three correctly. It's saying 12% for residential and commercial, except the 20-gallon, instead of raising it 12%, we're going to just tack $8 onto the 17.31.
12% and $8.
Oh, my gosh.
That's what, that was my reaction.
Yeah, you want a reaction? Do that. Go for number three.
Recognizing--
The community involved.
You'll fill the hall here.
Recognizing that the 12% for the 20-gallon can is like $2.30, so what you're really saying is, you're going to raise it about 10 bucks.
Ten bucks.
A month.
Per month.
Correct.
$120.
It would kickstart this, you know, the discussion about phasing out the subsidy, which I'm hearing most of you are interested in doing, so.
Just through the chair, I think more options are better than less options. And having an extra option may make one of the others look more attractive. So, why not?
Well, the other option is, I'm sorry, through the chair, the other option is, and I'm going to flip on this, because I've always said, when, sometimes, Mr. Grokot has said, "Well, he may have voted against certain increases," and I'd say, "Well, then, the general fund's going to have to make it up." And in this case, the general fund, we can also allocate dollars and say, "We're just going to have the general fund make it up," instead of the, instead of the public paying per month. In other words, if we want to, you know, make this thing come close--
That's proposal number four, option number four.
Well, it could be another proposal. I'm just saying, you could say, "Instead of trying to match up the $700,000, or whatever the number is that we're trying to match up, we say we're going to match up $500,000 from the public,"
And give a franchise fee.
"We're going to take, we're going to take the other $200,000 out of the general fund." I'm just giving an option. I mean, that, because if we don't raise them at all, that's where it's all going to come from.
That's what, in effect, making it be a rollover, and we'll true it up next year, and they'll have higher percentages next year.
We could.
Yeah. See, I am not in favor of any kind of rollover at all.
Except we're not, we didn't take it out of the general fund this time, because we borrowed the money.
Yeah, he's not talking about--
I'm not talking about borrowing. I'm talking about spending it, right? I'm talking about spending the money.
Subsidizing the community's garbage--
Subsidizing the public's folks paying. That's what I, I'm just giving an option. I'm not saying that's what I want to do, because I've always said the opposite, especially when I've dealt with my colleague here, you know? But that is an option. You just say, "Hey, we're going to make this, we're going to raise the rates X dollars, and then we're going to make it up out of the general fund." Just give it an option.
Is he eating his candy bar, by the way?
No, not yet.
What's happening down there?
I bring a candy bar for myself.
Oh, okay.
You don't want me to have a candy--
I was getting--
If you want me to have more sugar, you're really in trouble, man.
Okay.
Well, waiting for a motion.
Okay, let's see.
You started this.
Yeah, okay. Well, my--
Can I, before we make a motion, can I just point out something that the Option Three, don't know whether anybody else is interested in that, if we just apply that literally, what's going to happen is, for example, the 332-gallon can, if we left that at 93.77, which is simply a 12% increase, that's, it works out to be--
I missed your numbers there. I'm sorry. I apologize.
I'm looking at Exhibit A. The proposed rate is 93.77.
Oh, I'm sorry. The 30, I got it. 96-gallon can.
Right. If you divide that by three, it's going to be roughly 31.26, which will be less than what a single 32-gallon can will cost if we add the $4 on top of it, which would take it from 31.01 to 35.01. I'm not saying that's necessarily a problem. I just want to point out to people that we've got some odd--
All right. And no one's going to, no one's going to order three cans, just because it's less.
All right.
Okay, I'm going to make a motion. Okay, I, I'm, I'm gonna make a motion, okay? Um, I move that we authorize staff to issue a, uh, the attached notice of hearing for increased rates in the amount of, uh, 12% for commercial solid waste collection services, 12% for residential services with an additional $8 a month for 20 gallon and $4 a month for 32 gallon, and 3.25% for unscheduled services as shown in attachment Q of the solid waste franchise agreement pursuant to Proposition 218, and to hold such hearing on December 10th, 2012.
I'll second. Yeah, question I, just one quick question I have, um, for staff is, effectively what that, what we just motioned and seconded raises more money than we're projecting the costs are gonna go up by. Because we didn't do, we didn't show a reduction on the high end. Is that a problem under Prop 218 for a 218 hearing?
We can raise, but can we ask, ask staff then to come back with something that shows if we have those additional costs per can, what the percentage would need to be? 'Cause it would be something less than 12% then.
Oh, you mean to actually-
So we're just saying the maximum that we can approve at that meeting would be 12%, but they could do calculations for us to see what does that percentage really need to be to give us the-
Flat.
The revenue, right?
Yeah.
Something like that?
That's correct. This'll give us some time to recalculate the numbers based on the motion, to see what the maximum would be. And also, I think, as Mr. Moore pointed out earlier, any, uh, overpayment of the rates would generate a surplus where we would then, the rate payers would then be due a, a prime plus one interest rate back next year, which could be applied to whatever the cart migration rates and other impacts on the rates are next year. So it would help offset future costs as well.
Yeah, I mean, what you could do if you were in a surplus position like the, the six agents we, we showed earlier, is you could hold the rates stable for a year or two, or you could create what's called a rate stabilization fund, where you now have a pot of money, not unlike Vice Mayor Griselli's example of using some money out of the general fund, that could be applied in future years if the rate went back up. And we have seen that in some cities. I believe San Mateo has a rate stabilization fund, and I think one or two other cities are creating one. In fact, I think that's probably the reason that some of those rates were a little higher than they needed to be last year in some of the cities, is that you create this pool of money, and then if the rates go up, you say, well, the rates would normally have to go up 10%, for example, but since we have a rate stabilization fund, we'll take 2% out of there, and so suddenly the rates are a little lower. But, uh, the city manager's suggestion, uh, and Councilmember Clapper's suggestion, that is right. If you do in fact authorize us to go to a certain maximum, we can use the intervening 45 days to, uh, work with our experts and, and run some numbers and, and get it. Uh, Councilmember Olbert's question about, uh, you know, what kind of combinations one could, uh, come up with to address the 12% revenue need and also realign the categories a little bit. I think that's what I heard.
Any other discussion?
Well, I, I, I guess, I, you know, I was the one last year that, that, and as the mayor will remember, I was the one that wanted to, uh, try to stabilize these rates. So I asked that we postpone 3.5%, and we moved it, kicked the can down the road, if you wanna use that term, hoping that this year wouldn't be too bad and we'd get about the same rate or similar rate this year and then go down the, the next year, uh, until we finally get to that labor thing, which is basically hopefully gonna stabilize it for a number of years. That hasn't worked out because I didn't realize the migration was so much, as Mr. Moore said, and it's just a never-ending, it just keeps happening. Um, I, I, I think I'll vote against, uh, your, um, your motion, not because I don't think it's a good idea, but because I think it's a, at this point in time, it might be a bit aggressive. I think I could probably go for four, 12% plus four and two personally. So I just wanted to let you know why I, why I was gonna vote against that.
So, so if part of our direction to staff after we, if we were to take a vote and we were to all approve that part, would you be comfortable if part of our direction to staff would be to do an analysis that shows the impact on what the percentage would be if the, if the dollars per month for 20 gallon was four, five?
Sure. Yeah, no, I concur. And I see, and I see your point of what you're doing, and I, and I applaud you for it. In effect, what you're doing is you're setting, setting the bar up here, and then hopefully with staff's input, we may or may not have to go to that bar. We may be able to lower that bar and then still be able to, to make what we're trying to do. So I, I see your point on that.
Do you wanna amend the motion? Any other discussion?
No, the motion doesn't need to be amended, because we can just give additional direction to staff for what information we want to have available to us in the public hearing. Am I correct?
Does staff have that? So if you adjust those to, say, six and three or four and two, as Bob suggested?
Right.
Or should I amend the motion?
It's not necessary.
I think you're correct, Councilmember Clapper. I think there's two ways to look at, at, um, this, and we'd really need to hear from the Vice Mayor as to where his comfort level lies, but whether you're indicating that you wouldn't be able to support setting the rates at eight and four, uh, is different than saying, we could set out the rate notice saying, we may raise them up to eight and four.
Well, my, my point is, I wouldn't, I don't think I'd be able to vote for eight and four if it happened, but I understand what she's trying to do, so I, I still probably will vote against this motion, but I, I understand what she's trying to do.
Got it.
I'm just saying in my personal situation.
Okay, I think we're ready for roll call.
Councilmember Clapper?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Griselli?
No.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Grokot?
Yes. Okay, we're gonna take a, uh-
Mr. Mayor?
-five-minute break and before, 'cause the next item, I think we might have a little bit of distance to go on, and so we'll take a little bit of a break, stretch our legs, come back at, uh, 9:35.
Can, can we continue this discussion? There were a couple of other items that, that we voted on. Okay. I'm never gonna have one, I'm not gonna.
Okay.
Okay.
I have a...
But you do have the discretion.
He what? Coming underneath.
Stash report.
Yeah, yeah. I just didn't realize.
Ten second warning. Let's get started again.
It's like a game.
Mr. Selly.
Yeah.
Jeff, do you have some staff?
Nope.
Or the hell, go home.
Curry's wandering around.
Oh, all right.
That could be dangerous.
Mr. Survey, are you ready?
Yes, sir.
All right, let's go.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. Tonight's public hearing is to provide the City Council with information regarding the final EIR for Wheeler Plaza. In addition, the City Council will conduct a public hearing and consider a motion adopting a resolution for clarification, for certification of the EIR. Certification of the EIR means that the EIR has adequately addressed and reviewed the potential environmental impacts of the proposed project. If the EIR is certified, the city would then move into a second phase, which is consideration of the merits of the project, and that means that all the permits and the design considerations of the project would come forward, starting with public hearings before the planning commission and eventually to the City Council, maybe over the next six months or so. I'm going to provide an overview to the City Council. I'm going to try and move through the overview of the project itself fairly quickly. We can always return to that if you have additional questions or need some clarification. The city and the former redevelopment agency requested proposals for the redevelopment of Wheeler Plaza site, and Silverstone Communities was selected as a development partner with the city of San Carlos. The city, or the city as the successor agency to the redevelopment agency, is the owner of parcels in, in the development project area, including the parking lot and several properties around the edges. An EIR process was initiated to evaluate three component parts, which is known as the project, and I'll walk you through those different component parts. Tonight, we also have Rebecca Gordon, who's here from Lanfear Gregory. She was with our firm to assist us in preparing the EIR. And we also have Jane Blurstet and Matt Goine of Farron Peers, the traffic engineering consultants, to walk you through some of their information and answer questions. We also have John McMorro with Silverstone Communities, our development partner, and other staff to answer questions as we move forward. As I noted, the Wheeler Plaza project consists of three component projects. The Wheeler Plaza mixed-use project, which is 108 units with 190 residential parking spaces, and it also would have almost 10,000 square feet of Class A retail space land along San Carlos Avenue, and it would include a 237 public space parking garage, of which there would be a surplus of 50 parking spaces over what's there now. There's 187 parking spaces at Wheeler Plaza now. Another component of the project is the former Foodville site, and that would, the city RDA at the time, purchased the property, acquired the property with the intent of knocking the building down. We've heard over the, the last few years, the community is interested in some kind of a public amenity, so a plaza is being considered for that location, a public plaza, in addition to about 8,000 square foot of commercial retail space with a restaurant on the ground floor, office above. Then there's the Cherry Street BMR project, which would be activated through INLU, affordable housing impact fees to the city, and I'll, I'll show you where that is located. Now, in terms of the downtown context, the project, Wheeler Plaza project site is located here along Walnut Street, here's San Carlos Avenue, and Laurel Street is located right here. Here's where the former Foodville building is, and here's El Camino Real and the Caltrain Depot, and you can see it's very close to the Caltrain Depot. The Wheeler Plaza site, this is drilling down a little closer, getting a bird's eye view of the Wheeler Plaza development site and all the accompanying parcels that, that make up the components of the development project. These two yellow pieces here are, were purchased with RDA housing dollars a number of years ago in anticipation of a Wheeler Plaza development. These are the most recent acquisitions. This is the Foodville site and the furniture site at 1200 block of San Carlos Avenue. And so, the intent here with the, the acquisition of these properties was to make a rectangle so that it would be a viable development site. Here again, you see Walnut Street frontage, San Carlos Avenue frontage. The intent would be to knock the, the building down, as I noted earlier, Foodville. In the interim, during construction, this would be a valet parking area for the downtown during construction, and then, once that, this development was completed, then the city might begin construction on the, on this development. Another component of the development, as I mentioned, is the senior affordable housing complex project right here along Cherry Street. This is owned by Hip Housing. The city has assisted Hip Housing in the acquisition of that property over the years, and Hip Housing is interested in partnering with the city on a senior affordable housing project, and the city has had some discussions with this property owner to acquire this property as well to make this a viable Cherry Street development site. These pictures show some of the scale en massing in the general vicinity of the Wheeler Plaza project site here. You see the Civic Casienda development at about four stories and 50 feet, Samtrans Building and, and some of the other apartment buildings. This is looking down San Carlos Avenue and Walnut Street, right at the corner where we have our commercial properties that were acquired by the city of San Carlos. And this is the city, the, the site itself with the different components laid out. This is the site plan. This shows the 9,800 square feet of Class A retail along the San Carlos frontage here. This would be the development site for the condos and parking above. So this would be at grade level, at sidewalk level. You would access the parking garage, the public parking garage, which would be at grade. Part of the parking, public parking would be at grade, and then there would be a floor parking above. So you'd access that here along Walnut Street, and then the residential access for the residential below-grade parking would be here. It would be a secure access down below to the 190 spaces that would be below the development. There'd be a public plaza. One of the other components is connecting the project to the rest of the city, and I'll walk you through the pedestrian connections in a moment. This is a public plaza located here. The service access for these buildings here in the downtown would be from Cherry Street, and there would be a service entry here. It would go along here and then exit right at San Carlos Avenue. The intent of this service alley would be that it would only operate during certain, maybe in the morning, early in the morning, so that these businesses could take delivery. And one of the ideas is to then, perhaps you could even use bollards to block office sections so that this would become a much larger usable plaza area. And this would become, you could even block this off during non-business hours or during non-delivery hours, if necessary, to, to use it for public purposes as well. This is the basement level going underground, so this is the residential part of the development project underground, 185 to 190 parking spaces underground. And then, the level above the grade that we looked at when we were talking about the plaza, this is the second floor of public parking, so you'd go up. So we have two floors of a new parking garage there. Residential third and fourth floors would, would lay out like this. If you were looking up on Walnut Street, at the top of the parking garage, up a couple of levels, you'd see a private park plaza for the residents, and then the public plaza at grade here. And this is the top floor of the residential development, the condos. One of the things that came up during the draft EIR phase and the public, some of the discussions with the public that we've had is concern about the scale en massing of the building along San Carlos Avenue, and particularly in this location at, at corner of Walnut Street, too. So what was done is a floor of the units was removed from the frontage of San Carlos Avenue and Walnut Street and moved over into this location. And so they were replaced over here, and so this is now about 10 feet lower along this frontage. This gives you a, a section view of the development, so this is right at Walnut Street. If you were looking at a cross-section of the, of the project, this would be your grade, where your sidewalk is. As I noted, there, there would be a below-grade parking area, your retail parking would be here. You have two floors of retail, and then you'd go into this and then down to your basement level for the residential parking. This would be the retail space along the frontage of San Carlos Avenue and Walnut Street. It would have a, a higher ceiling height because Class A retail requires about 16 to 18 feet to make it real viable to get that high-end retail space. And so that's why this is a single story, but it is a much higher floor plate here. And then we would have two floors of residential above. And as I noted, you can see that the project steps up along, this is San Carlos Avenue, so the building steps up, and so to the I, this would be about a three-story, 40-foot high development project. And this just looks at, if you were to cut it through the back farther in the development, you see all the floors stacked up together if you were to move back into the development a little bit more. And this is the elevation as you look at San Carlos Avenue and Walnut Street. This is where the current Hole-in-One Liquor is, the, the single-story commercial buildings that the city has purchased over the years. And as noted, this is three stories and 40 feet with that, that large floor plate commercial retail space wrapping around the corner of Walnut Street. There's public plaza located here, the parking garage. There would be an access to a public pathway that would connect to the Civic Casienda development through the city hall, the library, and all the way through, actually, you could access the Caltrain Depot as well through this pathway. And so these are the condos as they would look further down Walnut. This is for, as you're walking down past the public plaza, here again is the entrance to that public pathway next to the fountain. There would be, this is part of the parking garage and then the residential units beyond. This is the residential driveway as you go down. So in terms of the, how it connects into the community is very important to make sure that it, it, it ties together with the fabric and, and the sidewalks and pedestrian access in the community. And so again, this is a very important component of that, and, and in planning this, it was thought that, that this should be retained, and it was a very important pedestrian pathway. It really connects civic center area and residential areas with the Caltrain. And so again, here you have, you have a pedestrian pathway that could be used following loading and pickup hours, and there's also this connection through the, next to the Wells Fargo Building and through the, you could actually go right through the ground floor of the, of the parking garage. One of the things, as I noted, is the plaza, proposed plaza location at the Wheeler, at the Foodville site, and again, one of the things that we've heard consistently is people want a, an amenity in the downtown. They want a public, more public space. And so this would be the public plaza after the Foodville building is knocked down. New retail space would rise here, two stories, and then this would be activated by that retail space. There would be windows here along the ground floor, there would be umbrellas, seating areas, and, and the like for use by the public. This is the view into the development from Laurel Street. This is that pathway that I discussed. This is just a conceptual drawing. It doesn't represent what, what would be there in the future. The intent is to plan this very thoughtfully and carefully through a lot of advice and community input. There's been design guidelines that are prepared, so if this ever does go forward, the city would have a good idea in terms of guiding principles. And here would be the two-story building, although it shows one, where the EIR looks at two stories in this location to make it a more vibrant area. In terms of project review to date, we did have a meeting back in December during the draft EIR period, and at that time, we had a sort of a town hall meeting over at the library. We invited everybody to come and comment. We walked through the project. The public review period ended in January for the draft. Then we took all the comments that we received, and there are written comments provided to all the verbal and the written comments, and that is your final EIR. A joint planning commission and traffic commission study session on the draft EIR, excuse me, was held in January, and planning commission review of the draft EIR occurred in May of 2012. In terms of project review, the Traffic and Circulation Commission reviewed the report. The traffic section is recommending that the City Council review the, the transportation chapter and recommends the council consider the traffic report and certify the EIR, as well as the commission. The commission spent two public hearings on this and is recommending certification of the final EIR with a couple of improvement measures, and our consultants can talk more about these improvement measures. So I'm going to hand it now over to Rebecca and Farron Peers, and I'll come back up at the end to make a recommendation. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Rebecca Gordon with Lanfear Gregory, the primary report preparers of the EIR. The city as the lead agency is required to assess the environmental impacts and determine that feasible measures or alternatives that would substantially lessen any significant environmental effects have been incorporated, and only following certification of the EIR as complete and accurate can the city take action on the process, on the project. In the EIR, we looked at all of the environmental topic areas. This included sending out specialists into the field to conduct site assessments, doing technical review of project plans and reports, and modeling of projected conditions. Throughout this analysis, we were able to conclude that there would be no impacts that would remain significant following mitigation. We identified 17 potentially significant environmental impacts that could be reduced below significance thresholds through mitigation measures. All the other impacts were less than significant. I'm going to talk about all of the impacts, but first I'm going to hand it off to Farron Peers to talk about traffic and then come back afterwards.
Before you carry on, just, can you give us an idea of how much time your presentation is?
You guys need about five minutes? Probably about eight minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. I'm Jane Blurstet with Farron Peers. So to give an overview of the traffic analysis, we looked at 10 intersections in the area, intersections on Holly, San Carlos, and also on Cherry Street. In addition to looking at traffic impacts, we also looked at the impacts of, of this project and other modes, transit, bicycles, and pedestrians. One of the first steps we do in, we're doing a transportation impact analysis, is to estimate the amount of traffic a project will generate. And so for this case, we looked at, we applied trip generation rates to the individual components of the project, came up with some initial estimates. We also estimated traffic for the existing occupied uses that would be removed. Now, these trip generation rates that we use are rates obtained from surveys of similar uses, but more in suburban locations. So they, they do not account for trip reductions that would occur for a site being located near transit, like the Caltrain station, or near other uses where, you know, people, residents at the site would likely go to restaurants in downtown and would walk or bike and not use their vehicles. And so we used some of the latest research on the trip generating and trip reducing potential of mixed-use infill developments to come up with the trip reduction. And so the project, adding all that and subtracting all those numbers, we, we showed that the project will generate approximately 83 additional AM peak hour trips and 130 PM peak hour trips over the current uses of the site. When we do traffic impact studies, we focus our analysis on operations of intersections because intersections are the locations where the roadway system is most constrained. So we look at several different scenarios. The first scenario is existing conditions, which are the existing volumes that we get from traffic counts then at the intersections, and existing lane configurations, and then the traffic controls, if the intersection is signalized or unsignalized. So we evaluate the intersections with level of service, and it's, a lot of people think about a report card grade. So we're grading our intersections, and we're looking at the operations, and we say that in the city of San Carlos, an acceptable operation is the intersection that's operating level of service D or better, A, B, C, or D, with a threshold being that the middle of level of service D with a volume to capacity ratio of point, of point eight-five. So currently, there's one intersection that's operating unacceptably, and that's Holly and Old County during the PM peak hour. Then we re-look at the intersections when we add the traffic generated by the project and regrade them, and we're showing that there's really no major difference. Some little intersections will change a level of service, but none of them go to an unacceptable level. We also want to look at future conditions. We were, we're considering traffic from foreseeable projects, so these are the Transit Village project. Another regional growth, and there's, we got both estimates from using the CCAG model, the congestion management agency for San Mateo County. And we also looked at planned roadway system improvements and modifications. So again, we regrade the intersections, and with future traffic growth, there are a few intersections that are going to operate poorly, level of service F. But then we do this analysis again with adding the project traffic, and this is where we look at significance thresholds. So even though an intersection is operating poorly, the city has decided that the, that the, the project has that, an amount of traffic that's going to be significant, and the way that's evaluated is whether or not it's going to increase the delay by two seconds or increase the VC ratio that's over point eight-five, more than point, point oh-one. So two intersections fall into that category. Holly and Laurel is going to, the project's going to have a significant level of service impact at Holly and Laurel and at Cherry and Laurel. So those are the intersections we look at, try to identify mitigation measures. And the mitigation measure at Holly and Laurel is to signalize it, or in this case, to turn on the signals that are already there to have them fully operational. And with this traffic signaling operation, the intersection would operate level of service C during both the AM and PM peak hours. At Cherry and Laurel, it's currently, has stop signs on two approaches, so the mitigation measure would be to add stop signs to other approaches so you have an all-way stop intersection. And this will allow it to operate level of service B and C because we only have a side street stop, the intersections of the, the vehicles on the, at the stop sign sometimes have a hard time turning left across the, the stream of traffic that's not stopping. We also looked at impacts and mitigation measures for items that didn't fall under level of service impacts. And so, at the intersection of Walnut and Cherry, there's a concern about pedestrians. And so, the mitigation is to add crosswalks, and there's a variety of crosswalks, and then we, one recommendation would be to look at whether or not to have high visibility crosswalks, which are easier for drivers to see. And then also to paint some of the curves red so that you increase the sight distance of drivers of vehicles so they can see oncoming vehicles and they can see pedestrians. Also, at, at the site plan, there was a recommendation to make sure that the drive aisles and the, the driveways are appropriately designed so that they have adequate throat depth. That means that a vehicle stopped exiting the driveway can stop behind the sidewalk and not block traffic circulating on-site and also have a clear view of oncoming pedestrians. We also looked at the parking conditions. Now, the project is going to be providing 460 parking spaces, and that includes the uses, the new uses are required to provide 285, plus there's a replacement of, there's right now 146 public parking spaces on-site, so the project is actually providing more spaces than are needed and replacing more than existing public parking spaces. But we did another analysis to see whether or not that parking supply was adequate, and so this is looking at the 237 public shareable parking spaces. So there's going to be 235 that are reserved for residents. They're not going to be able to be used by the public. And we had some, did some parking surveys to look at the existing demand, so of the, and we looked at the weekday, kind of around lunchtime, and then a weekday in the evening. So you want to look at the lunchtime crowd and then the, the restaurant dinner time crowd. And our analysis shows that on a weekday at lunchtime, there's going to be a surplus of about 33 spaces, and in the evening, there's going to be even more of a surplus because of the parking demand, the existing parking demand is lower at that time. And that's it for me.
So to summarize briefly, the remaining impacts, the majority of them occurred during the construction period. These are the mitigated impacts. The mitigation includes reducing diesel exhaust and fugitive dust, dust permitting tree removal, avoiding nesting birds, appropriately handling any cultural resources that are discovered during excavation. during excavation, applying a stormwater pollution prevention plan to address any erosion or siltation that occurred during ground disturbance, with building demolition, ensuring that any hazardous materials are handled appropriately, such as lead-based paints or asbestos. And also, there's some soil contamination on the site from a previous dry cleaning release that requires further assessment and appropriate handling during construction. And finally, a construction noise reduction plan and a vibration mitigation plan during construction. A few of the impacts would occur during the operational period. These would be mitigated through compliance with structural design plans and regulations to address seismic activity. If the soil contamination is not fully addressed during construction, it could include vapor extraction or vapor barriers. For the noise, it would require design-level acoustical analysis of proposed mechanical equipment, and also for interior of residential uses. And then finally, the traffic impacts that were previously discussed. So as I mentioned, all of the mitigation measures would be reduced to less-than-significant levels or would already be at less-than-significant levels. And through adoption of a mitigation monitoring and reporting plan, these would be applied to any of the components of the project that would occur on the site. We did also look at some alternatives to the project. These included reusing the building as it is, the project without the housable affordable housing component, because it was unsure how realistic that was when we first started, and also a reduced density of project that would be one last story. We found that while impacts would be marginally reduced, they would be similar, and they would be reducing impacts that are already less than significant or could be mitigated to that level. However, they would substantially reduce the ability to meet project objectives. So what I just described, and Faren Pierce described, was all the analysis in the draft EIR. The final EIR also includes comments and responses to those comments that were received during the public review period and the previous study sessions, some minor revisions that we made to the draft of the EIR. And through these responses and revisions, we were able to clarify and amplify the environmental analysis for the project, and it did not change any of the conclusions in the draft EIR. So at this point, I'm going to hand it back to Al.
And once again, Honorable Mayor, members of the council, the certification of the EIR is done by resolution of the city council, which is a written statement that you adopt. And the, as the city council's recommending body, the planning commission does the same. And with regard to this project, as it was reviewed by the Transportation and Circulation Commission in addition to the Planning Commission, the Planning Commission and the Transportation and Circulation Commission are recommending that the city council adopt the resolution certifying the final impact report for Wheeler Plaza. And staff is available to answer questions, as is the, as is the consultants, and we do have a motion to assist you if necessary. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, any, open it up to questions for now. Down there?
And I will not be having any questions since I was sitting on the Planning Commission when we approved the final environmental impact report, so I won't feel ignored if you just keep moving on without me.
Sounds good.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And here I was hoping, Councilmember Clapper, that you'd have all the inside dope, ask all the hard questions.
I will have a lot of the answers, of course.
Oh, okay. Perhaps I should address my questions to the dais. First off, Mr. Sve, I wanted to thank you publicly and your staff and other staff members for helping me understand this project after I joined the council, and in particular, helping me to avoid having to ask really silly questions in public. But I did have a few that I wanted to follow up on. I'll leave others to judge how silly they are. I think we may have talked about this before, but I don't recall the history of it. If I look back at your very original map, the Laurel-San Carlos street corner, which I think, I think is occupied mostly by the Mythos Restaurant currently, there may be some other business next door to it, it's not part of the project. Was it ever envisioned to be part of the project somehow, or?
We did look at that. It wasn't envisioned at first. At first, you know, we looked at trying to create a development site for multi-unit residential development here. We have looked at it in concert with this development here, the Laurel Plaza development. This may or may not come up for sale in the near future. It would be fairly expensive to purchase and then make a development work here. However, from an architectural urban design standpoint, it makes a lot of sense, as this would be a gateway, you could have a really distinct architectural design there to welcome you into the downtown. And it makes this, actually, it gives you more flexibility in terms of what happens here and how the plaza is formed. So yes, we've actually taken a look at it, we've looked at the economics of it as well.
And I take it from your comments that, in terms specifically of the EIR, it's not a reasonably, at this point, it's not a reasonably foreseeable element?
That's correct.
Related to that, though, I was curious about, how do we assess, for example, the possibility of we do, this development that we're talking about, the environmental impact report on tonight, moves ahead? I could frankly see it, not necessarily just at Mythos, but at some of the other portions along Laurel Street, I could see it triggering further development, which might be more intensive uses than what they have there. So was that something looked at in terms of making an assessment about what was reasonably foreseeable that needed to be studied in the EIR? If so, what was our basis for leaving it out? Or for not studying it, I shouldn't say leaving it out?
Well, it was, you know, from an economic standpoint, when we first started looking at it, you know, it just seemed really expensive to add. It didn't make sense if we added it just to this project initially. It just didn't pencil.
Can I interrupt you for a second?
Yeah, sure.
Because I may have misled you a little bit, or confused you a little bit. I wasn't actually necessarily thinking about adding it to the project in terms of the investment of it, but we do the rest of the project, and some other developer comes in and says, wow, we could leverage off of that. That's what I meant. So it wouldn't necessarily be city capital, it would be somebody else's capital, but it'd be another big project.
Yeah, we, well, we didn't. We didn't think it was viable enough, and it wasn't part of the dialogue moving forward over the last few years. It was sort of an internal dialogue. There had been some internal discussions about it. However, if it was, if the city was interested in adding it to some kind of a development project, we believe that it would be most, it would make most sense to add it to this and have a separate development project that would spin off. So the environmental component of this could tear off of what we have here, the environmental document here, and we would need to develop more of a project description of what it is. But I don't believe, and I'd like to actually refer the procedural aspect of it to Rebecca, but my initial reaction would be that we could use our EIR and do a minor environmental document, such as a negative declaration, if we decided to add that in.
I apologize, but that's not the question I heard him ask. The question is, and maybe I'm, maybe I thought you wanted to know, if Joe Smith owned some of those buildings, sees this big thing go up, and Joe Smith wants to add on, not us, Joe Smith, did we think about, did that enter into the process? Is that, I thought that's what, that's what your question was. Not city involved.
All right.
So, not city involved. So did we, did we consider if Joe Smith and Mary Jones, who own these other projects, go, oh, wow, look at this, we're going to, we're going to do this now?
We did not add that to the EIR. We talked about it from an economic development standpoint, but we didn't add it to this project.
I'm sorry, I just didn't mean to interrupt.
No, 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 I appreciate the clarification.
But it could be added in the future if, for instance, if the city decided to work with a separate developer and market this site, and this developer that came in said, well, makes more sense for me to merge these properties and acquire this, because then I'll get a much more viable or interesting development site, then that is possible.
And it would not be a major amendment to the EIR?
Well, that would depend. But to answer briefly, this EIR analyzes the project, which consisted of properties either under control of the city or considered to be under control at the time. It wasn't looking at a master plan for area development, so that's not included in the EIR. However, the EIR does look at cumulative development in the area when it analyzes the impacts, which includes just some general growth, as would be allowed under the general plan.
Not necessarily specific to those properties, but just general growth?
Correct. It's likely if any of those other properties came through, if it was a substantial project that they would need to do their own environmental analysis.
Okay.
And if, I would like to interject just a moment, because pertinent to the discussion, I just want to clarify that the EIR, does it include what we, around here, we, yeah, the chairs?
Affordable housing?
Affordable housing element, and, okay, and then I probably answered my own question, then with that, the?
The Laurel Street.
Right, the Foodville site.
Correct.
That's all included in the scope of this site plan, if you will.
Correct. It looked at those as the three components of the project.
All right. Thank you.
Last question I had, when I sat in on the most recent Planning Commission meeting, one of the topics that came up was, was a discussion about noise ordinances and noise impacts of a project that, whose EIR was under review. And one of the points that I took away from that was that the city noise ordinances are such that if a given situation is already over a noise threshold, even if the incremental project does not have a significant impact, or if it has any impact at all, mitigation is still required. In other words, that the cumulative base becomes significant. So I wanted to ask the question in the context of the traffic studies, since there are a number of intersections there that are not performing, as I understood the chart, which my colleagues said I had to memorize. The, there are a number of intersections that are performing at an F level under the cumulative projection without the project, and still are at an F level under cumulative projection with the project, so there's no incremental impact. Do they still require mitigation? Is the traffic thing similar to the noise ordinance? There may be a city ordinance issue or?
So they do not require a mitigation, but the city has a traffic impact fee that has identified improvements for those intersections. So the project will pay the impact fee and it will go towards improvements.
I see, as would other projects, and eventually, the theory is that some mitigation will actually take place to make the traffic flow better?
Right.
Okay. But it's not required for this particular project, other than the normal course of business paying the mitigation fee?
Yeah, so there's?
I mean, the traffic impact fee, sorry.
Yeah, so they pay the traffic, there's two intersections where it has a significant impact and has to mitigate its impact at those. But it doesn't, the amount of traffic added by the project does not reach the thresholds of significance at those intersections. So if it's already at an F, you have, the project would have to increase the VC ratio by more than .01, or increase the delay. And it does not, it doesn't add enough traffic to move the needle.
Even though the needle has already passed where it should be?
Yeah. But that's why the city has a traffic impact fee, which is the best way to approach that.
So it sounds like, Mr. Sve, it sounds like the, the traffic standard is different than the noise ordinance standard in this case. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Just a couple for Mr. Sve. The alleyways, where you have the service entry now on that map, is that where it is or where it's going to be?
That's where it is. Both. Yes, it's, it's where it is now, essentially, these are the backs of the buildings along here, and so the delivery occurs typically along the backs of the buildings, and we would retain exactly what's there. So that was another thing, is we wanted to try and come up with something that was the least amount of disruption for these existing businesses, and so we left it the way, that was one of the criteria as, as this was developed.
So that alley on the south end is not going to change?
This one here would remain, in fact, this is the existing alleyway, yes.
That's what I thought.
Through the chair, it could, it could, because you talked about moving that building right above that says service entry, moving it down and lining it all, lining it up.
That's correct. So if, if, if the Cherry Street below market senior housing project went forward and the city was able to acquire this property, then the intent is to line this straight up with Cherry Street, so this service alley would move over, so, so the existing situation would move over, so you have a straight route through the development project. So yes, that's correct.
Okay. That's all I have on that at the moment. The other question I had was on the, on that slide, that was the intersection analysis results. There were two intersections that had the cumulative impact that was grayed out. And I'm wondering why the Holly and El Camino was not grayed out, because that's going from level D and C to level F at both AM and PM. Maybe that's a question for your consultants. Thank you.
I'll go back.
You just passed it.
No.
It's that other one.
Yeah.
Either before or, there you go. All right, second one down. Why?
Because?
Why is that?
It's the intersection where the, in order for it to be a significant impact, the project would have to increase the volume-to-capacity ratio by more than .01, and it only increases it by .01.
Okay.
So it doesn't add enough traffic. But it's an intersection that's covered by the traffic impact fee.
I have a question by that, because I was going to ask, if you don't mind.
No.
I was going to jump on that, because that's somewhere where I was going too. Raise all the money you want, how much can we do to that intersection? What if we can't mitigate it at all? And what if we study the intersection and say, you know, we can't add any more turn lanes, we can't, you know, it's, it's an underpass, so, you know. When, when do we look at that?
Well, you did, when you did, when the city did their traffic impact fee analysis, they looked at future development in the area, and they looked at what the improvements would be, and came up with, and so that was evaluated. Now, our analysis, we use slightly more conservative estimates for regional growth, and so that might be a little bit of a difference. But you do it in your general plan stages, one way where you look, a good time to look at your overall transportation system, and then when you do area-wide studies, like your, your traffic impact fee.
All right. Thanks for letting me jump on. Go ahead. Any other questions?
No, not at this time.
Mr. Mayor, I also don't have any questions, because I was on the subcommittee for this project for the last three years, so I have had a number of meetings on this, so.
All right.
To you.
I have a few, and I'm going to go back to that traffic thing, because it seems to me, I see intersections studied, but I don't see roadways and road capacity being looked at, arterials coming in and out, and I, I don't know, it seems like, since I've been on council all these years, I've seen EIRs that do address the traffic flow other than the intersection, just so that, you know, what's the capacity of this road? And the one I'm thinking of is Holly Street, because it, you know, chokes out, and I don't know if you've ever tried to come into town in the afternoon or leave town in the, in the afternoon. And it's, and quite frankly, it's not just that road. I understand this project's in a certain location, but, you know, looking at, at San Carlos as an organism, if you will, you know, try going past Carlmont High School in the morning, or try going up Edgewood Road in the morning, you know, we have all kinds of, where these arterials that feed the freeways or whatever, they get backed up. And then we get criticism as council members sometimes, that, you know, why are you developing more and more and more when we can't even get in and out of this town as it is right now in the morning? So can you address that? How, I guess part of the question too is, how far are you required when you're doing these EIRs to cast the net? Maybe that's the real question.
We have to cast the net as far as, we want to make sure that we encapsulate the area that's going to have significant impacts. And so you want to make sure that, if you look at the intersections on the edges, you know, are they, do you have impacts there? Do you need to go a little bit farther? So at, if you look at the edge of our study area, Holly and Laurel is one of the intersections, but it's the unsignalized intersection, so when you signalize it, you improve the level service all the way to level service C. So there's a, there's a big improvement. If, I would say if we go a little bit farther, if we went farther north on Laurel, the amount of project traffic would be a lot if we went farther north on Laurel, the amount of project traffic would be a lot lower, because the project traffic at Laurel and Holly is going towards 101. Right? So we're, they're not going to be going farther north on Laurel.
What was that again?
Okay, so if I want to, let's see. Let's go here.
Yeah.
So if I look at, so we saw our intersection's level of service. This was one intersection that was operating poorly.
Mm-hmm.
Most of the traffic, project traffic at this intersection is going towards 101. So it's unlikely that there's going to be very much project traffic going north. So that would make me say that I would not have to look at any intersections farther to the north. It'd be unlikely that the project would have an impact.
On El Camino.
Oh, sorry, up here. But also at El Camino, because again, most of the project traffic is going towards 101.
Right. And that's, so I'm not concerned about traffic going north. I'm concerned about traffic, again, I'm looking at the feeders, the, the roadways that come to us, how people get in and out of San Carlos to 101, and how people get in and out of San Carlos to 280.
Yeah.
Because, you know, if we build 108 residential units, yeah, maybe some will take the train because they live close by. Maybe some will be retired and won't go anywhere during the work hours. But you're still going to have a number of new households where people are going to drive their car and they're going to look for a way to get out to 101, or they're going to look for a way to get to 280 so they can go to work.
Right. Well, in this case, we're seeing it's about 130 peak hour trips being added to the roadway system. And when you spread it out, you really dissipate that traffic pretty quickly. And so you are having some traffic added to those intersections. The amount of traffic is very small, doesn't, doesn't increase the capacity, the volume to capacity ratio by more than 1%. So the city has decided that that's not, that's, that's okay to add a little bit of traffic. And so then it's.
All right.
You know, Mr. Mayor, if I can jump in, I, I think you're actually raising a really good question. It seems to me that one could be in a situation where we don't, but let's say we had a dozen projects, each of which was going to add less than 1%. Cumulatively, that would be a pretty bad thing.
Right.
On feeder roads that are already pretty bad at certain times of the day. Whether it relates to, you know, whether we could tag this particular project with it, I suppose that's where that traffic impact fee comes from, is conceptually, that's supposed to say, all the development in town kicks in a certain amount of money and eventually the streets get fixed or the traffic flow gets fixed. But I also took your point earlier. I thought it was a really good one, which is, okay, but when does that actually happen? I mean, what's the plan for making that happen? And I frankly don't know.
Well, I suppose we could get our city engineer up here and he could remind us of what we did with our general plan, or maybe Mr. Sve may know.
Sir, I mean, I can add to the dialogue. When we did the general plan, we do have a circulation element in the general plan. And we also prepared an environmental impact report that analyzed total build out in 20 years of our assumed build out. That means the Transit Village, Wheeler Plaza, and many other developments, over a million square feet of commercial space on the east side, a good number of multiple family residential units. So it looked at 20 years, what is the maximum growth that the city could handle? And then the EIR analyzed it from a traffic standpoint. And also, in that document, it established thresholds. So it said that from our community, we will only accept a level, a certain level of service degradation, and we won't go past, anything past this certain level, which I believe is a D, LOSD, is unacceptable to the city of San Carlos. So we did, in that document, look at cumulatively all the development that would occur, and where those impacts would most likely be. And we've talked about it a number of times in different forums, but one of, what we do know, is as you mentioned, there are certain hotspots in the community that we know are already suffering from a traffic standpoint and would continue to do so. And under the cumulative scenario in our general plan, would just get dramatically worse unless something was done. So PAMF was another, is another good example in that, with that development, it's a very large development. And we, the city determined, yeah, there's going to be impacts from that project on Holly Street in particular, and at Britton Avenue in particular. And so as a result, there are some future projects planned in our community to fix those cumulative problems that we know are coming. Holly Street Corridor is probably the worst one in the community. We all know that. And so the Holly Street Interchange Project is coming forward and the like. So and also, I'd like to mention that.
The Holly Street what?
Interchange Project that we've discussed, that's the correct name for it, right? The Holly Street Interchange Project.
Holly.
Holly 101 Interchange Project, sorry. So that's one of the key projects to relieve the congestion in the, in the Holly Street Corridor.
That's, okay.
And the traffic impact fees go to those types of project, to that project, to other projects in the community. Also, I'd like to point out that, that when we talk about cumulative conditions for this, this is the worst case scenario, assuming our general plan build out at level of service F, you know, that, that was shown in this, in this slide back here, that's cumulative, that means general plan plus the project. So that's 20 years away theoretically, cumulative, all the development that would occur in the future. But going back to your, your point, the general plan did look at our city from, on a citywide basis, and it established thresholds for, for traffic evaluation in the future and what we would accept and what we would not accept. And that's what some of these, that's what this analysis is based on.
But this analysis, then again, just this project, with project, one of the intersections is at E, Holly and Old County, is it not? Existing plus project.
There's no E.
There is.
Number three, Holly, Old County.
But it's already at E.
Already at E.
So the project doesn't actually add anything to it. Makes it a little bit worse, but not enough to shift it to F.
This is not common sense.
Well, through the chair.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
That we extend the meeting until 11 o'clock.
Second?
Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Waiting for a break.
I know.
All right. I have some other questions. Just want to go over quickly. Mr. Sve, you said that we'd be at 40 feet where we currently have, most recently, we had a rug retail place. But then we can see these towers at either end. How tall are those?
I believe that's still 40 feet. This, this may be a little taller, perhaps a little bit. But it's still, as you can see, it's the 16-foot floor plate with two floors of residential. This does look like it might be slightly taller to create an architectural feature and a sense of arrival at the corner here.
The same thing's going on down at the other end, where Sister City Alley is right now?
It's possible, although I might ask John McMorro what the plans are. We haven't really developed the plans to that level of detail. That would be in the next phase, where we would bring forward the architectural design and.
So, and that's when, perhaps we would address some of the, you know, we had seen some, we've gone over, what do they call them? We had visioning meetings and so forth, and we came up with design guidelines, right? And from that, I would expect to see setbacks as you go up, not just go up 40 feet, no setback at all anywhere. And I think, so is that, when that would get discussed, or do you do it, any of that gets done here or no?
Well, this is, at this stage, is pretty conceptual, because.
It's conceptual sketches.
Yeah, it's, because this is the, just the environmental impact component stage. But we would get into a great deal of detail with regard to the architecture at the next stage.
Okay. Question about parking. It talks about taking out parking. It doesn't, it doesn't mention parking, but it says painting curbs red. So is that anywhere accounted for in the whole parking numbers? We'd obviously lose some places where people can park now, right? Street parking in the, in the area of the project, if we're going to paint red curbs at Cherry and Walnut?
It's pretty tight. What, what was occurring is people were parking really close to the intersection. And the, the planning commission was concerned because of the visibility when you pull up to the intersection.
I understand that.
Pedestrians and all that. If you walk out there and take a look at it, there's already some red out there now. And I, and perhaps it would be extending that a little farther. You know, I don't know for sure if we would lose parking spaces at that intersection. Perhaps on Walnut, as you go south on Walnut from Cherry, there may be, because the cars do park, they, they're very tightly spaced there.
Right.
So it is possible. But we don't know for sure yet if that's the case.
Through, through the mayor, if I may, if I may, Mr. Sve, haven't those curbs already been painted? The crosswalks put in and the curbs painted?
The crosswalks have not yet been put in, but the curbs have been painted.
The curbs have been painted.
Yeah, that's right. So it could be that the existing curb painting is sufficient. So those have been painted to city standards and no parking spaces have been lost at this time. But it may be that we need to, you know, take a look at it, a little closer look as the crosswalks go in.
Okay. And that would come out in future documentation? Doesn't really impact the EIR because there's surplus parking, is that correct?
Right.
All right. Then the other thing I was wondering about with, just, I was looking at, you know, the whole analysis of the EIR, and I was thinking, if the parking, that's surface parking right now, essentially goes away, because it all becomes garage parking, even though some of it's at the current surface level, still inside of a garage. And I don't know about you, but most people, myself included, when I have the option of surface parking versus parking inside a garage, just, you know, it's just usually more tight, it feels a little less safe, especially, you know, given a certain time of day and so forth. People will go around the block looking for someplace else to park. And I'm wondering if there was any effort to either survey current users and find out if, hey, you know, we're thinking of changing this into a parking garage, what would your, what would your, you know, action be if we were to do that? Would you continue to park here? Or would you circle around looking for parking on Laurel or Walnut or Cherry? And if that's the case, if, if you got quite a few people that said, yeah, I wouldn't park in the garage, I'd go look for something, you know, on the street, that would impact your traffic as well. So has anything like that been looked at?
I'm going to ask the, our consultant to address that. I mean, we haven't done it specifically for, for this, unless the consultant is aware of something. And maybe there's something that the consultant could add.
You didn't look at it. Is there any behaviors that you're aware of, parking garages or anything like that?
I would say parking, parking behavior is going to be subjective. They never go do it a little bit differently. It depends on your history. Because I know for me personally, I like parking in parking garages during the summer because it's, it keeps my car cooler. So that would be me personally. So, and I, I live and work in Walnut Creek, where we have some surface lots and some parking lots. And it's easier to park in the parking garages a lot of the time. So my personal behavior would be, I would not have a problem working in, parking in a parking garage. So my point is, you're going to get some people that are going to, that they're going to be comfortable with it, and some people who aren't, just depending on what their experience allows.
And that's why I was asking, if there was any type of survey of current customers, if you will, that use these, this, this Wheeler Plaza to park in, to find out what their behavior, you know what their behavior is. What would, what would your behavior be if this surface area wasn't here?
Particularly for this, we just looked at the supply and the demand.
And it could be a huge impact. I mean, that, I think somebody showed a slide with, what you did, of the maximum use of those Wheeler Plazas. In fact, I've been out there at noon and it's, every space is taken. If you went through there and asked those people that are there at noon using that space, if this were a parking garage, what would your behavior be? You might find you've got a pretty good impact to traffic and parking that's not accounted for in the EIR right now.
Through the chair, that's an interesting question. But, you know, it may be even more complicated than that, because I bet that even if there was such a behavior, it probably isn't static. I mean, I'm just visualizing somebody who felt that way, driving down, doesn't want to park in the garage, wastes half an hour looking for a space out on the street because there's not enough spaces, finds out from talking to other folks, oh, there's room in the garage. I mean, at some point, they're going to, you know, you shift your behavior. Behavior is not a, a static thing. So, because, because at the end of the day, the overwhelming metric that I, I hear from people is, they really want to just be able to get really close to where they're going. I mean, in San Carlos, they want to park right in front of where they're going. And they don't want to waste more time driving around than they have to. So they sort of learn to adapt.
If I could add to that, that was exactly the point that I was hoping to make. In fact, parking was removed as a sequoia topic area. We included it in the EIR for informational purposes. Direct impacts for parking, it's found actually changed people's behavior as opposed to continuing to be a permanent direct impact on the environment. So like you mentioned, when people can't find parking or the type of parking that they like, they'll often change their behavior, rather than continue to, to come to that location and circle every time.
All right. Those are all my questions. So.
Can I ask one other quick one?
Sure.
Parking related, or actually trip related. When these studies do, I presume you're doing some kind of almost Monte Carlo simulation modeling of trips and whatnot going through a good, so you have metrics on average number of trips based on retail space. And what's the, what's, for lack of a better term, what's sort of the standard deviation in those numbers? I mean, is it, I'm not asking for a specific thing. What I'm asking is that if your model is assuming 50, is it 50 meaning someplace between generally 45 and 55, or is it 50 someplace between 0 and 100?
So the trip generation rates are developed from surveys of typical uses and the, and we use the average rate.
Right.
And, and/or we use an equation that takes into consideration the size. Because like for a lot of, like office developments, as the size increases, the trip rate goes down. This case, it's a small office that actually has a high trip rate. The standard deviation can be pretty, fairly large for some uses.
Okay.
Like for single-family housing, the average rate is 10 trips per day, but I think it ranges from like five up to 18.
Okay. I appreciate you answering that. I mean, if I flip and talk about parking for a second, you had like the study that showed there was, I think, 33 extra parking spaces. So what that could be is, you know, it's a range, obviously, of something to something. The problem always becomes is, is that people's anger over not finding a parking space is a lot higher than their joy in being able to find a space. So the, you know, the range becomes very significant.
In this case, I think that the project is providing more public spaces than are currently there on the site. So they're adding to the public parking.
Okay, fair enough in that context. Right, right, right. Thank you.
Can we have?
Mr. Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Yes.
That's what I'm here for.
Yeah, yeah.
Mr. Mayor, just, just to clarify the, this was noticed as a public hearing. So the procedure I'd like you to employ is the standard procedure for a public hearing. Open, you're going to open the public hearing now, and then when you're finished hearing the public testimony, you close the public hearing and then.
So we've opened the public hearing, right? Very good. I've got three cards here. Elizabeth, I can't read the last name. Lizinski, did I get that right?
Good evening. I'm not exactly sure this is the venue to talk about, the affordability aspect of this project. But I attended the planning commission meeting last week on the Transit Village, at which the developer has pulled all his affordable units from the project, which means that that entire tract along El Camino, if this project goes, if that project goes through, will have no affordable housing units. The one-bedroom apartments, he is scheduled to rent at $2,300 a month, which is $900 more a month than I'm currently paying for my market rate apartment in San Carlos, which also means that our housing element in San Carlos will not. our housing element in San Carlos will not be, um, assisted by that project, nor will anybody who needs affordable housing in the transit corridor, will they be helped because that, this is clearly way out of the range of anyone I know who needs housing. I mean, that's $900 more a month. So in this current Cherry Hill affordable housing project, I'm not sure whether, it's very hard to find specifics. Is the developer going to be the profit, for-profit developer or the nonprofit hip housing? It makes a difference in their levels of how much they're going to rent the units for. If they're a for-profit, um, developer, they can, they can charge rents for people making $46,620 a year. They can charge $1,249 a month for those units. For somebody making $62,200 a year, they can charge $1,666 a month for apartments. That's more than half these people's take-home pay a month that they can charge. So if you're really looking for affordable apartments in San Carlos, um, I'm hoping you're really looking to have a, a nonprofit group do the, um, the affordable section of this housing because otherwise it's not going to be affordable and it will impact all your other, um, statistics here. So, um, I encourage you to, first of all, provide information to the public. Um, thank you.
Thank you. David Crabb. Sorry, I couldn't look at that quick enough.
Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council, I'm putting on a different hat this time. I'm speaking on behalf of the Sierra Club Sustainable Land Use Committee rather than as an individual, uh, because Bonnie McClure couldn't make it tonight. Um, the Sustainable Land Use Committee promotes walkable neighborhoods which group new homes, jobs and shops near transit stations and corridors. Wheeler Plaza falls into this category. Sustainable land use is a strategy that the Sierra Club has advocated to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, protect the natural environment, increase transit use, balance the jobs-housing ratio, move new development away from existing open space in single-family neighborhoods, which I think is really important. We're going to, if we're going to have development concentrated near the transit corridors, don't build in the hills, uh, and don't take the open space. That's part of the logic of the whole thing. Uh, and expand the range of choices and variety of services available for all. So our vision for new development within a quarter mile of major transit stations and transit corridors is that the development should be a mixed-use, compact development that creates a vibrant neighborhood, promotes, provides comfortable, safe walking environment with access to everyday needs, uh, provides bicycling and public transportation options that are safe, convenient and accessible for everyone, and produces minimal waste and pollution through the life of the development. So back in January 17, 2012, the Sierra Club sent a letter to the city in response to the draft EIR and we still stand by the suggestions that were included in that letter. However, we also recognize that the Wheeler Plaza project is in jeopardy today due to the loss of redevelopment funds. Uh, thus to maintain forward momentum on this project, we urge the council to approve the FEIR tonight with the caveat that the items that were included in our January 17 letter be studied and evaluated during the design, development and entitlement phase of the, of the project. It's sort of similar to what we're doing in Transit Village. Uh, these suggestions included, we'd like to be sure that there's a guarantee on this, if this project goes ahead, that there's a minimum of at least 15% below-market rate units in the project. Uh, we'd like to make, we are suggesting that they reduce the, the parking ratio for the units from 1.7 cars to 1.5 cars. And this is in accordance with recent, recent parking studies that have taken existing.
Mr. Crabb, we have your letter and the two minutes that, we're, we're over on the two minutes.
Okay.
So we'll review the letter.
All right, you're running late tonight, so I'm fine. Thank you.
Yeah, we are. Sorry, thank you. Mr. Stafford.
Good evening, Mayor Rokat, members of the council. I'm here in support of the certification of the final environmental impact report that you have before you this evening. When you think about the season that we're in right now, much of nature, much of life goes dormant. This project and many developments are slowly working their way out of that dormancy. What never goes dormant is vision. This project has vision that is intergenerational. It reflects the environment of the general plan update, which former Mayor Klein was instrumental in putting together. It reflects collegiality of the highest order. What you have before you today is really a local environment that is working for this development. Historically, Wheeler Plaza was named, as you know, after Ed Wheeler, who doubled down on civic responsibility at that time and was both the police chief and fire chief. I'd like to suggest that this evening is your opportunity to double down civically, both for the present and the future. The future is going to see much smaller cars, smaller units. The ratios you think of today are going to be enormous. One parking spot will be plenty. The stall will be half the size. The units will be 200 to 600 square feet. So when you look at the density before you today, it's probably 50% less than what it should be. The parking's probably a third more than it should be. The point is, you've got a duty for what's here now and in the future, and this project serves both. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public like to speak on this item?
Make a motion to close the public hearing?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, now, now discussion.
Through the chair, would it be possible to have staff comment on some of the points raised by the last speaker? I'd just be interested as to, obviously we picked certain ratios that we're using on various things and I'm not saying I agree or disagree with the comments that were made. I'd just like to know reaction.
Uh, through the chair, with regard to affordable housing?
Sorry, no, I was thinking of the very last speaker's comments about, uh, parking stalls, size of units.
Sure. Um, with regard to parking stalls, there's a couple of different things at play. One is, um, transit-oriented developments are closer, typically closer to transit. They, so people can walk and they're, and the idea is to get people out of their cars and onto transit. So in, in these corridors where you have a transit-rich environment like Caltrain and, and the bus lines and such, um, cities typically have lower parking ratios for new single-family residential development. Um, on the, so for us, it's about, let's say, let's pick 1.5 as a ratio that in, in our TOD corridor area around El Camino. Um, however, in the marketplace, developers and lenders believe that people generally want more parking. Um, they want to have the option of having the two cars, even though, um, generally things are going the other direction from a regulatory standpoint and it's sort of somewhat of a common sense standpoint. Um, so you have those two, two things at odds. So even though the city may say, well, it's okay to park at 1.5, the developer and the lender may say, no, we're going to park it at 1.7 or 1.9 or I'm not going to lend the developer the money to do the project. And so that's the reality, that's the push and pull between regulation and, and the marketplace.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Uh, I think Mr. Collins has a question.
Uh, Mr. Sevay, if you don't mind, I just, uh, I was wondering if you might be able to address Ms. Lisensky's, uh, concern about the affordable housing component?
I'd like to ask Mark Sawicki, our Housing Manager, to address that.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. Mark Sawicki, Economic Development Housing Manager. Uh, this project, um, we have a BMR ordinance in San Carlos. It used to be a 15% inclusionary ordinance for both rental and for sale. On the rental side, we can no longer require inclusionary units. So for the Transit Village, they are required to pay a fee. Uh, they can choose to build the units if, if they, if they want to. And that's a private development. That's, that's their choice. What they want to do, we can only impose the fee. On the Wheeler Plaza project, our BMR ordinance now allows for an in-loo fee. The requirement is the 15%, but it allows for an in-loo fee. If the developer pays the in-loo fee, the city can then go use that money to build affordable housing elsewhere. One of the advantages of that is that you can then leverage those dollars with state and federal funds, particularly low-income housing tax credits, which allow you to do a development, get more units for the, more bang for the buck, more units for the same, um, city dollars. Um, you can also get a much lower affordability. So the idea of the Cherry project, and it's, and it's really only a concept. We don't control the properties yet. Uh, we haven't identified all the funds, but the Wheeler Plaza market rate units would generate over $3 million in fee. That you could then leverage to do perhaps 30 units of, of affordable housing versus having only 15 condo BMR units in, in the Wheeler Plaza project. Um, we would potentially target those for senior and they would probably be very low and low as opposed to low and moderate condo units in the Wheeler Plaza project. So we'd get more units at deeper affordability under that basis.
Thank you. Okay, to the point of the EIR.
I'll be happy to make a motion to, uh, at least to get it going here, to adopt resolution number two, 2012 dash.
67.
67. A resolution of the City Council of the City of San Carlos certifying the completeness and adequacy of a final environmental impact report for the Wheeler Plaza redevelopment project.
I'll second it. Discussion?
I'd just like to say that, uh, appreciate all the work that staff has put into this and, uh, whatever the outcome of this vote and this project, and I frankly personally hope they move ahead, um, I also think that, um, the council needs to, over the next few months or year, needs to actually start thinking a little bit about envisioning, um, what Laurel Street will look like, um, say in 2025 or 2030. I tend to view this project as sort of a last of the linchpin projects on the, the current cycle of development. Um, but you can't sit on your laurels, so.
So to speak.
So to speak.
Oh my God, I didn't even do that deliberately. It's late, it's late. Sorry. Thank you, Ron.
You're welcome.
No, I didn't.
Well, being that there's no other discussion, um, I'm really struggling with this whole concept of the traffic impact. I, I can't see continuing to make what is a bad situation worse. And it's obvious from your report on the, uh, even just the intersections, never mind the capacity of Holly Street itself as a roadway, um, meaning, and, and just to explain that, even if you didn't have controlled intersections, if there, if you could just drive right through the intersections, you have this choke point because there's only so many lanes. And when people are trying to get in or trying to get out, depending on which way we move the lanes, uh, well, we don't even actually move them, but we open it up to two lanes of traffic, uh, morning and afternoon, I believe it is. It's still a, a total mess out there, especially on Holly. And to me, that's close enough to the project. The project impacts that. I know it's, you know, cumulative, other projects. I heard all that, but I just don't see a way to address it with this EIR. And given that that is the way EIRs are, the fact of it, I can't in good conscience vote for approving this EIR. And there's another aspect to it that, on page nine, that I sort of hinted at with my questions, but, um, the visual impact, and it says here, there's less than significant impact. To me personally, look, you know, I, I spend a lot of time in the downtown because I live downtown. And I walk through Wheeler Plaza on my way to places in the morning or whatever. Um, to me, having that gone and, uh, having to walk around Wheeler Plaza as opposed to through it, or even just the visual impact of, uh, that's why I asked about the towers on the corner. Right now, there's a building there that's all of 20 feet tall, probably not even. And that whole block is probably something in the range of 20 feet if, or less. And to double that and then on the corners to put 50-foot towers, not to mention the, the added mass to the plaza itself, um, I think that takes away from our community. And what I see there, I've always said, I'm the one who brought up the idea of, if we're going to take away from the existing residents of San Carlos and the texture of our downtown and what's there now, we ought to give back something big to them. And one of the things that we need is a place to gather ourselves closer to the downtown. We have Burton Park where we have events, but we're screaming in this community for a place where we can, uh, gather. And so because we don't have it, we end up closing the 600 and the 700 and the 800 block of, of Laurel Street, sometimes parts of San Carlos Avenue, in order to have these gatherings. To me, doing this project should include some type of major plaza, not, uh, what I'll call a postage stamp park, pocket park like we have at, on Laurel further down. And it's, was told to us that what's there, what's planned is about that same size. To me, that's not enough of a community benefit. It doesn't give us what we're, what I think this community is looking for. And so on this particular item that's in the EIR about visual impact and impact to the community, I don't, I don't see anything here about mitigating. And the only thing I see about mitigating is building less of a project. And then it says, well, you can't do that because it wouldn't work out for the developer who wants to make his money or the city or whomever that wants to, um, make some money out of this. So it's, to me, it's not there. I can't vote for this EIR and support it. So I'll be voting no. Rokat.
Councilmember Clapper?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Rokat?
No. Okay, I think we have a few more items here. Item.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, um, I'm not sure that there's really any pressing urgency with item C or D, but I do believe we would like to get to item J from the consent calendar that was pulled.
Okay, so we'll go to item J. And the reason I pulled that very quickly, um, is my concern is just not knowing on item J, which is complete streets policy, what that's going, going to mean for streets in town. I'll give an example, Graceland. And if we wanted to, uh, do a repaving project on Graceland, which is a fairly rural street, it has no sidewalks, it has no, you know, there's no edge of roadway, uh, bice, room for a bicycle lane or anything like that. It's just a pretty rural-looking street. What would be, what's the impact of adopting this policy on streets like that that we have in San Carlos?
Honorable Mayor and Council, Deborah Nelson, Planning Manager, and, um, our Public Works Director might want to comment as well. The complete street policy just furthers what this, uh, previous councils adopted as role of the Transportation and Circulation Commission a number of years ago when you pulled in that bicycle committee into the Transportation and Circulation Commission. And also the practice that we have had both with capital improvement projects and with private development projects where we bring those forward to the Planning Commission, uh, and the, and the Transportation and Circulation Commission. We do not see it affecting kind of more maintenance kind of projects, as you mentioned. Um, we will talk as a staff about, for example, whether we would take forward a project that created a new curb cut for a parking lot, um, whether we take that to the Transportation and Circulation Commission. Mostly it is to further what they already do on making pedestrian and bicycle decisions about how our streets operate in the community.
So to just summarize what you're saying, uh, roadway like Graceland, like Dale, like, uh, winding way, if there's a paving project that goes on, we're not going to be told by the federal government, oh, you have to widen the right of way, you have to put in curbs.
No, 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 and the only place that the federal government would be involved is if we did like we did for the East Side Connect and apply for federal funds, then they would say, do you have a complete street policy? We do. We, we have one in many ways. In fact, CK thought we already had one because our Transportation Commission is organized the way it is. We have an approved housing element. We have a circulation element.
Not to belabor, I know we need to get finished here, but I, I just want to make sure too. I noticed there was a, a line in there that the Public Works Director or the city engineer can, uh, come up with an exemption.
Yes.
And in those kind of cases, we could come up with an exemption if, if necessary.
Yes.
All right. I just don't, again, I just don't want to be, uh, something heavy-handed coming down from the feds because we adopt this policy, or the state for that matter, the way things are going. So, all right. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion. Do I even need to read the resolution because it's a separate item, Mr. City Attorney?
No, you do not have to read it.
May I make a motion to approve item 7J?
Second.
We'll call.
Councilmember Clapper?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Grokot?
Yes.
All right, that concludes our meeting. We'll take those last two items and put them on the next agenda. Thank you.